To the town clerk, do we have a quorum? You do, okay, thank you. All right, town meeting members, let's do a quick run-through on our clickers to make sure they're all operational. As a reminder, at the clerks check-in outside, that is actually where it's truly being recorded. If you are here with your signatures, however, this is also a good way to check it and check your clickers at the same time. The light is on. Thank you, everyone. If you're, as we scroll through, if you have any problems, you can reach out to the town clerk in the back, in the back row. As I mentioned previously, that I was extremely hesitant to return to the podium for Springtown Meeting after last year, you probably can guess how hesitant I am at this very moment on the heels of a national election. Last week, I worked with one of our high school classes that was focused on what it means to be an active citizen. In preparing for that class, I went back to Springtown Meeting to pull video for them to watch, and I listened to my opening remarks that I gave on that night. I surprised myself at how much they still resonate after six months and after the national campaign election cycle we just had. If you ever want to renew your faith, work with our youth. There is no doubt that we are impacted by the national and state influences in politics. However, we are here to serve, under an oath, and we serve on a local level. We have easier opportunities to take on the issues before us in collaborative and transparent ways, to include all voices, even the ones we do not agree with, to make our tiny dot on a very large map something to call our home for all of us in our community. The votes this body makes is not to find a scorecard for one, it defines what is best for many, our entire community. E Pluribus Unum, we make one decision from the voices of many. There will always be a lot of work to be done for Winchester by many volunteers who sit in this room and those who will brave enough to throw their hat in the process in the future. There will always be room for betterments, for improvements, for change, and yes, sometimes we must take step backwards to make enormous leaps forward. I think it is important that we all acknowledge that it can feel deflating, dark, and lonely in those steps backwards at times. If in those moments, those who are feeling the feels, shut down, stop communication, stop showing up, turn to bitter pettiness, and most importantly, choose to not look for what may have been missed and truly authentically identify it, how can we get the momentum and the steps backwards to make the largest leap forward? E Pluribus Unum, we make one decision from the voices of many. As I open the Fall 2024 Town Meeting, let us remember that we come together in civil assembly, in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions that have a profound influence on our community. Let us remember that our presence in this room every night includes and supports modeling diverse voices, respecting diverse opinions, and coming to the best solution of our town and community using the democratic process. The next generation of civic leaders are among us and watch us. Caring for each other, even those we disagree with in this community, is by far greater importance than any difference we may have. Town meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum and having 121 in attendance, your moderator sees that there is sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the 2024 Fall Town Meeting, and it is so declared. To our town meeting members, welcome back, it is so great to see all of you. Welcome also to town staff, members of boards and committees, town consultants and article presenters, as well as residents and other visitors who have all joined us tonight. Welcome one and all. I am Heather Von Mering, your town meeting moderator. Going forward, I do request that you refer to me as Madam Moderator. We are joined by town meeting staff, the town clerk, and the clerk of the meeting, Mary Ellen Marshall. Also with us in the auditorium and cafeteria is staff from the town clerk's office. Sitting with the select board, we have town council Jay Tellerman of Mead, Tellerman and Costa, our town manager is at that table as well. Winchester's IT Director, Matthew Griffin, who helps everyone at the podium. Chris Conway and staff, Facilities Coordinator for the Department of Public Works. Drew Chase from Options Technology is sitting behind me, who runs your clickers and votes. And of course, David Goethe here and his talented crew from Windcam that are up above. Since we last met, there are a handful of new hires, assistant supervisors, and positions above that. Ian Sexton has been hired as Assistant Planner. Mr. Sexton holds a Master's Degree in Political Science from the University of Louisville with a focus in urban planning, especially filling the missing middle in housing. His work in Massachusetts and with LDS Consulting Group and Wellesley included work on various affordable housing projects, such as our very own Waterfield Development. Prior to moving to Boston, he lived in Louisville where he was Assistant Associate Planner. Welcome. Raymond Hugh has been hired as Assistant Engineer. Mr. Hugh holds a Bachelor's Degree in Civil Environmental Engineering from UMass Amherst. He comes to us from Kleinfelder where he supported water-related design projects in Springfield, Westport, Somerville, Boston, Beacon Hill, Back Bay, and prior to that was a resident engineer for South Yarmouth and Clinton. Thank you to all our newest members of the town of Winchester staff, welcome. We will continue our meeting tradition with the Pledge of Allegiance. We all look to the flag, let us remember the Thirteen Stripes, representing the thirteen original colonies and the thirteen letters of E Pluribus Unum, one of many. Tonight's flag ceremony will be completed by the Girl Scouts Troop 77026 and 77025 of Winchester. For those members who would like the Options to join me, please rise.
Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, post the colors. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard, retreat. Color Guard, dismissed. You may be seated. Our town moderator.
Thank you. Finally, before I move on to preliminary motions, it is with great sadness to form the body that Frank Vazella, William Wright, Ed Grant, and Linda Pickering have passed since we last met. Frank Vazella was a lifelong Winchester resident and retired Winchester police officer. One moment. He served our community as an officer for 32 years, and he served our country with the US Army. William F. Billy Wright was a longtime member of our police force and served our country as well with the US Army. Edward, known by friends as Ed Grant, was a proud Irishman, graduated from Winchester High School in the class of 1966, which took him to our Department of Public Works to provide our community with more than 40 years of service, rising to the Director of the Department of Public Works. One of his major achievements was in the negotiations associated with agreement with the MWRA for the town's free water from Spot Pond. Linda T. Pickering taught sixth grade English at McCall Middle School in Winchester, her hometown for over 30 years. It is estimated that in that time she taught over 7,000 students, and she was well-known for a contagious sense of humor and warmth in the classroom. Your moderator kindly asked for a moment of silence for the retired officers Vazella and Wright, DPW Director Grant and Mrs. Pickering, and all of those in our community, local and throughout the world, who we have lost in their honor and in their memory. Thank you. It is parliamentary procedure that all communication is to be directed to the moderator. It is recognized that it is a formal process and can feel unnatural at times, but it maintains a safe and welcome environment for all. We do our best to try to outline what is going on as we move through the meeting for our newest. As you know, it can be an adventure. Today's adventure is quite one. We will start with the preliminary motions, consent agenda, Article One, from the reports of boards and committees, and then we'll be moving onward from there. Article Four, reported to the Planning Board, will be moved to after our break. We have a precinct meeting for 30 minutes in that break. Please note that Article Four will be moved to Monday evening, not the following Thursday, but the third night of Town Meeting. I have been informed that town meeting members had questions that require answers. I want all of you to feel well-informed, and as a result, I'm going to move this article to Monday to give town meeting members more time to collect the answers to their questions. At this time as well, Articles Five and Six have been withdrawn, and the citizens who were bringing forth this motion want to express their gratitude for the meeting members who reached out to them. They will use the next six months to collaborate with the Select Board and the Planning Board, and hopefully will return for Springtown Meeting, taking into account the feedback they received from many of you. Article 21 is also being withdrawn. That is a citizens petition as well. They are working with the town manager and building commissioner to determine if an additional bylaw is the right course forward to meet their desired outcome. Check your email. As a town manager's office, Jennifer Cafarella sent all of us emails with a map of our precinct meeting locations. After our precinct meetings, don't forget to visit the Girl Scouts. We will return and start then with the Planning Board at that time. Moving to page one of your Town of Winchester 2024 Fall Annual Meeting Articles, Motions, and Comments booklet, the blue one this time. It is moved and seconded to adopt. The resolution relating to preliminary motions is printed in your motion book on page one. This does not include the consent agenda. Please note on number six, we need to address our business in four nights or our votes will not be certified in time to send out our tax bills. I hope you all read my memo, so stay focused, stay tuned in, and be ready for some potentially long evenings. Our next session will not be next Monday due to Veterans Day, but next Thursday, November 14th, and then following by Monday, the 18th, and ending on Thursday, September 21st. So Thursday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday. To get this work done before us, please communicate with the sponsors and town staff to get as many of your questions answered. In addition, lean into the TMMA, the Town Meeting Members Association, as resources available to all town meeting members are there as well. I believe we are ready for the question on the preliminary motions. Seeing no one rise, all those in favor of accepting the preliminary motions?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. At this time, the moderator's appointed Philip Frateroli, who is at my right as a deputy moderator, to assist me during this town meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda, this gets a little bit tricky at this time. We are pulling Article 26 and 30 off of the consent agenda. In addition, there is a Scribner's error on Article 29 on page 127 of your motion booklet. So if you want to turn to 129, I'll point out what the change is, and it's actually just a Scribner's error, there's additional language in there that's not meant to be in there. On the second line of the motion, there is a, after related, there are four words that need to be stricken, the $224,070.94, of which shall should be stricken and replaced with to. The motion for Article 29 should read, "It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $199,070.60 for the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to be used for the PEG access service programming, monitoring the cable operators' compliance with the franchise agreement, and to prepare for renewal of the cable franchise license, including any associated expert and legal service." The reason that Article 26 and 30 are being pulled is the motions are being, have been modified since the blue book was printed, and with that, I felt it was appropriate to pull it off the consent agenda. It is moved and seconded that the 2024 Fall Town Meeting advance for considerations Article Three, 11, 19, 24, 27, 28, and 29, and take action on such articles without debate on any such articles provided that, upon the request of five voters at this town meeting made, before the vote is taken on this motion or otherwise at the moderator's discretion, an article shall be removed from the consent agenda and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course of business at this town meeting. Any questions? Seeing no one rise, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article One. Article One is brought to you by the Select Board. I really appreciate all of the boards and committees who submitted their reports by written format for Article One versus presentations. Due to the time and trying to keep this town meeting as tight as possible, prior knowing that a lot of the citizens petitions were pulled, they all provided you written reports. You can find those at the Town Meeting's website for Winchester. So go to Winchester.us and move to the dropdown menu for Town Meeting, you will see all of the reports that are being filed under Article One. Article One is coming by the Select Board, they get the first, they get the first time to speak because it is their article. It is moved and seconded that the reports of town officers, boards, committees, including the Finance Committee be received and filed. On behalf of the Select Board is their Chair, Michelle Pryor.
Is it on?
Yeah.
There it is. All right. Good evening, everybody, I'm going to try to make this quick. So we're going to start with our usual, please support Select Board-sponsored or co-sponsored articles. I highlight here Articles Four, Nine, and Twenty-Five. I'm going to talk about some of the other articles in a minute as they relate to capital. So those are ones that we have put on ourselves or co-sponsored with some other committees. So kind of lots of changes since Springtown Meeting. We have half of a new tea station, but it looks nice, and we have, our orange cone farm has shifted off of Cross and Forests, but I really wanted to highlight that finally got paved, except for that little bit by Hatlandview where we're doing the gas transformer, but some traffic mitigation, some speed bumps, enhanced crosswalks. So I think we're all very happy, not the least of which are our neighbors on Forest and Cross Street and those of us who go there often. So just wanted to highlight that, I thought there was a nice capital progress from us since the spring. The other things that have happened since June or July, we've had a slew of new businesses opening downtown, timed well with, I think, with the new train station, some new restaurants, new boutiques, and some new services. There are more professional services and tile stores and other businesses, but these were some of the ribbon cuttings I was able to get from the Chamber, and a little plug to please visit during the holiday stroll. Some ongoing work, no different from the spring. We are still looking at capital needs, we have, we've made some strategic decisions, which I'll talk about in a minute. We are still trying to improve our coordination with other boards and committees, I think that's going a bit better, and trying to keep everyone informed. We have had the Climate Action Committee, Conservation Commission, Planning Board a few times to our meetings. We've sat down with superintendent and school committee chair and vice chair to start some conversations about capital needs, as well as starting some budget discussions, which we're hoping to have one in November and one in December. So trying to get ahead of some of those decisions before Springtown Meeting and before the town manager's budget goes out on February 15th. So I would say, we're doing better, but we're not yet out of the woods. But I think we're making some good progress, and I'm grateful to all of the boards and committee chairs who take my phone calls or reach out or come when invited. The other thing we did this fall is the Select Board took our ARPA, which was federal stimulus money, and kind of earmarked $300,000 to go to nonprofits and organizations in town. Similar to ribbon cuttings, this aren't, this is not the sum of all the projects that we funded, but left to right, top, top, top row first, a new sculpture park right across the street on Shore Road from the Griffin Museum, new front stairs at the Anco Exchange, a new gate and a more straight fence at the Stone Family Playground, new lighting at the Sanborn House, electric van for Wright Lock Farm, and a bunch of Meals on Wheels. That's truly what's inside those bags. So we wanted to celebrate, Bill McGonigal, Anthea Brady really spearheaded that on the Select Board, and we had great response and really happy to be able to invest. There were some other, you know, software that we paid for Indigenous Peoples' Day, but I thought the pictures showed some concrete investments, really trying to share that benefit with more than just, you know, municipal buildings. Where we did do some ARPA investments in municipal buildings and in capital, in the spring, we talked about some schematic design and engineering, town hall roof, library roof and windows, that is now coming up on Article 13, which is co-sponsored with Capital Planning. The Winchester High School Gymnasium update, we funded engineering in the spring, that is now Article 18 for your consideration, co-sponsored with EFPBC. Mystic School Heating, the engineering is now, we just opened bids this afternoon, we will take that up as Article 32 toward the end of the meeting, and invested some ARPA funds in Leonard and McDonald Field Playground improvements. So certainly happy to see a variety of capital needs, both public space, historic buildings. And with the CPA having passed on Tuesday, Town Meeting will now be involved in decisions on how to leverage another potential funding source and some state match on projects that will move forward historic buildings, open space, and affordable housing. And we did that, hopefully with a more incremental tax impact, without a large debt exclusion vote for the town. And thank you to Jen Ryan and David Miller, who spearheaded that CPA campaign. So well done on that. We're still working on, you know, we still have some work to do on reviewing capital needs and coming up with those, how to fund those various purposes, but in this year's capital articles that you see with the Select Board, we had encouraged Capital Planning to leverage the existing funds, to look at some responsible borrowing, and to use free cash to advance some critical projects. And you see that in some of the articles that we've co-sponsored in some of the motions, you know, 12 through 13, I'm sorry, Articles, you know, 12 all the way up to 18. So I'm grateful to the Capital Planning Committee to having a thoughtful approach to looking at borrowing, to looking for free cash, but also, let's use those funds as best we can, and let's address some things that we put engineering dollars towards and that we know are really critical needs. Roger McPeak, I think, will show some pictures of, you know, the library windows and roofs, but we're certainly pleased to be able to bring that to Town Meeting this fall. And in closing, please support our articles. This is a screenshot of open seats on boards and committees, it actually goes like a page and a half, you scroll, 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 but you can get there if you have more time on your hands and want to show up to more meetings, we have lots of openings, one or more openings on many boards, and thank you for your service to Winchester.
Next up, we will have the town manager, Beth Rudolph.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, good evening, town meeting members. I'm pleased to come before you this evening to provide an update on various town initiatives, including a look back at FY24, and an update on ongoing management priorities. The town continues to be served by a capable professional staff who work diligently each day to support the needs of our community and to implement the policy objectives and projects endorsed by Town Meeting. I'm grateful for their service. I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work of our town clerk's office this fall, led by town clerk Mary Ellen Marshall, as they managed the state primary in September, the presidential election earlier this week, and the preceding weeks of early voting, and the preparations for this town meeting. Please join me in a round of applause to acknowledge their efforts. Moving on to financial matters. The town successfully navigated FY24, which closed on June 30th. In general, our property tax revenues and state aid met budgeted amounts. Our local receipts exceeded the budgeted amounts due primarily to higher-than-expected investment earnings as a result of favorable market conditions and the town's overall cash flow position. We had healthy departmental turnbacks of approximately $2.45 million, which was due in part to staff turnover, retirements, and other vacancies, the use of grant funds for departmental expenses, and turnback of almost all of the FinComms reserve funds. The Department of Revenue certified the town's free cash balance at just over $24 million in September, which was up from approximately $20 million certified last fall. The town meeting is being asked to appropriate approximately $3.48 million from free cash this fall for various items, including over $2 million to support capital projects. Based on the certified free cash balance, the operating reserve at the end of FY24 was approximately 20%, up from 18.6% at the end of FY23. If all the free cash articles are voted this fall, the operating reserve will drop to approximately 17.45%. DOR also certified the water and sewer retained earnings at approximately $725,000, down from $1.93 million last fall, and the Recreation Enterprise Fund retain earnings were certified at almost $1 million, which is up from, up over $100,000 from last year. This slide shows the free cash and retained earning balances since FY17. Free cash balances have trended steadily upwards since FY18, as have Recreation Department retained earnings since FY21. The drop in water and sewer retained earnings between FY23 and FY24 is also shown. As we do each year, staff is currently working with our financial consultant to complete a mid-year check-in of the town's water and sewer enterprise funds, and will be back at Springtown Meeting with recommendations regarding water and sewer rate adjustments if needed. Despite the healthy close to FY24, the town faces a challenging budget climate in future years. Senior management's top priority over the next few months is working with municipal department heads on their FY26 budget requests and updating our three-year financial projections for FY27 through FY29. Based on initial discussions with our health insurance provider, the town expects to see significant increases in health insurance costs in FY26 and over the next several years as a result of overall market trends. A second and equally important priority is the continued development of our long-term capital planning strategy, including identification of critical infrastructure needs in upcoming fiscal years and completion of the ongoing projects such as the Lynch Elementary School reconstruction and the South Reservoir Dam renovation, which are shown on this slide. As town manager, I fully support the capital plan being presented to Fall Town Meeting by the Capital Planning Committee, which is in line with the priorities identified in my capital plan released in January of 2024. The CPC's plan includes the use, the direct use of funding from the capital in building stabilization funds, additional bonding against both accounts, and the use of over $2 million in free cash for capital projects. It also prioritizes construction funding for critical projects that have previously received design and engineering funds. Other management priorities include completion of the town's updated housing production plan, as well as the economic development and strategic plan in conjunction with the Planning Department, as well, and also implementation of the town's communication plan, which was completed this fall. I look forward to working with the newly-formed Winchester Committee for Community Preservation as we take on the exciting task of implementing the Community Preservation Act here in Winchester, which was just approved by the voters earlier this week. And finally, echoing the plug that Michelle gave, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a few things happening this fall as we head into the holiday season. The Winchester Cultural Council and Cultural District are sponsoring their second annual town-wide open studio event on Saturday, November 23rd, and the Chamber of Commerce will be holding its annual holiday stroll and midnight mass events between December 2nd and December 8th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from the Chair of the School Committee, Karen Bolinesse. While they get ready for their, for their report, the School Committee had a tremendous amount of new hires, and I'm just going to give you some of them, maybe in between while people are getting ready, because there are so many of them. But I want to make sure that we recognize them. Chris Campbell, Assistant Director of Special Education and Out of District Coordinator, he was previously the Special Education Supervisor at the high school. Aiden White is the Special Education Program Supervisor, previously principal at the Walker School in Needham. I'll stop there and you can begin. We'll keep going down the list.
Okay, that is a long list.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So good evening, town meeting, and thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Kara Mariama Bolinesse, the Chair of the School. the Chair of the School Committee. Thank you to our School Committee members, who give so much of their time and energy in so many capacities in the schools and in town, also to our student members and to our district leadership. I'm pleased to provide an update since we last met at Spring Town Meeting. It's been a very busy start of the school Here's our mission statement, which guides our leaders and teachers as they work with students from day to day. The School Committee has been working with Dr. Hackett and the leadership on refining the district's five-year strategic plan. This provides a broad vision of where we'd like to be long-term with respect to teaching and learning, community, culture, and well-being, and operations and systems supports. We're grateful that Town Meeting approved our budget in May. As we turn towards developing the FY26 budget, we're grappling with some familiar issues. This is not forwarding the way I thought it would. Our district enrollment has been climbing again. We're up 67 students with higher-than-projected numbers from New River Street and Cambridge Street developments, which are still under capacity. So, thanks to Town Meeting's support and the EFPBC, we've enlisted UMass Donahue to update the school's facilities master plan, which will study our projected enrollment over the next 10 years, as well as long-term planning for our building and educational needs. Understanding these trends helps us to project staffing needs for our students. It is a collective bargaining year with the union for all five of our units, so this will be a large unknown. The number of our students with special needs who go to schools outside of Winchester has decreased in recent years as students graduate or age out of the public school system, and more students stay within local schools with their neighbors. One thing out of our control, though, is tuition increases, as we saw a 14% increase in last year's budget and then a 4% increase in this year's. The strategic plan is flexible so that administration and staff may hone in on specific goals each year deliberately and thoughtfully. Tonight, I'll be showing you some achievements and highlights of our progress and where we're going. I won't read through all of this, but it's definitely progress in action. Our dedicated educators are reviewing curriculum, instructional practices, and professional development needs that span kindergarten through fifth-grade literacy. New electives have been introduced in the middle school, and others have been expanded at the high school. The district has also worked on new state-mandated processes in special education and expanding performance assessments that help students develop skills for use in the real world and future careers. You can also see some statistics about our class of 2024, with 91% of the graduating class moving on to four-year or two-year colleges, and 85%, I believe it was, moving on to one of their top choices. I talked about some of the skills that our teachers are teaching students, and so here are some photos of what this looks like. From their early years, learning the basics, to middle school, working together to solve problems, to being curious about the phenomena that they see with hands-on work, working together to make a difference in the real world, and also across disciplines, and lifting each other up along the way. So with the support of teachers, families, and community, these young students do some amazing things. So, from the Daisy Scouts at work, to some of the Eagle Scout candidates whom you saw in an earlier slide, to these ninth-grade biology classes who raised nearly $6,000 for cancer research as part of their classroom projects. We've earned, our students have earned multiple world language awards, 31 SEALs of Biliteracy, and four highest-level SEALs of Biliteracy with Distinction. There they are. We have seven National Merit semifinalists with 38 commendations and two finalists. Many of our sports teams are ranked in the state and heading to playoffs this fall, not to mention setting records in the Middlesex League. Many of our music students were selected to the district festival this spring, and three advanced to the All-State Festival. In operations, the district has upgraded security and safety measures, partnered with the town on upgrading playgrounds, promoted sustainable cafeteria and utensils, and also digital practices, and we purchased the first electric van. You've also likely been watching the rise of the new Lynch School. It is on time and within budget to reopen in the fall of 2025, and it's the first net-zero, direct-to-ownership, and solar-powered building of its kind in this town. As planning turns to how its fields will return to use next year, or how the students and staff will be moving back in, its presence in our community and its impact are becoming more and more real. So, in summary, it's been an exciting year with more work to be done. Please tune in to our biweekly Finance Subcommittee webinars from the School Committee to learn more about the unique challenges of school budgeting and development. With your support of your students and your teachers, we can all make great leaps and bounds. So, thank you very much. And then also, we've just provided the QR code for the district's great website, in case you haven't had a chance to look at it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from the Chair of the Finance Committee, Peter Calabrese. And I'm going to keep going with the new hires at the School Committee, or, Jeff, I'm sorry. Moving on to the School Committee, we have Aiden White, who is the Special Education Program Supervisor, previously the principal at the Walker School in Needham. Christina DiMari is now the Special Education Supervisor at the high school, previously the Special Education Supervisor at Lincoln and Lynch. Greg Costa is now the Special Education Supervisor at McCall Middle School. He came to us through the Special Education Content Leader at Tingsborough Public Schools. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Town Meeting. My name is Jeff Calabrese, Chair of the Finance Committee, to give you our Fall Town Meeting update. And before we get into it, I think it's helpful to remind Town Meeting that we work for you, and this is a job that we are extremely serious about, collecting the best information possible, giving you the recommendations to make your decisions. With that, as we prepare for FY26, we have four objectives that are unanimously approved by our committee, and I'm going to talk a little bit about each one. So, number one, strive to deliver a structurally balanced budget in Spring Town Meeting. Number two, maintain and protect our AAA bond rating. Number three, as you heard from the Select Board and Town Management, strive to move towards capital planning best practices. And number four, advise on the benefits of having budget growth targets. So, what is a structurally balanced budget? So, that is when projected revenues equals projected expenses, without the use of free cash flow, and free cash, I'm sorry. And we've gotten questions in the past of why this is important. It is important because this is the foundation the town can have to address more strategic problems like capital planning. So, if we're not into the weeds for day-to-day management, we have the time and ability to think about longer-term planning. So, that's why we put an emphasis on this point. To point out, the average single-family property tax over the past 10 years has grown at an annual rate of 4.5%, which is above the prop 2.5% plus new growth. So, this is the curve that we are on. This does not include additional Lynch debt, does not include the CPA that was passed, and does not include Morocco. So, just an understanding of what taxpayers are contributing, again, this is single families only. And a look back to our FY25 budget process, we were presented a budget with a $1.9 million gap. By using revenue and expenses, we were able to give Town Meeting a structurally-balanced budget to have a conversation about what you want to do, and we intend to do the same for the FY26 budget. Goal number two, protect our AAA bond rating. As a reminder, our bond rating was put under advisement by Moody's in 2022. It was subsequently reaffirmed, but that process brought up some major issues, or issues that we should be serious about. Number one, our amount of debt. Number two, our ability to pay that debt. And number three, our OPEB liabilities. So, this is something that's top of mind for us, and we've worked to understand where the trip lines are here, to understand how deficits and spending can impact our bond rating. Now, for example, this is the starting point for Moody's when they generate their rating, and you can see leverage accounts for 30%. So, a big portion of this is debt. And then two other points, one, which is already addressed, our low operating reserve minimum policy of 6% to 10%. We believe, I believe that's been identified as not being in line with other towns. And number two, as Town Manager, as Beth mentioned, if we spend $3.5 million today, that's 14% of our entire free cash. Moving on to capital. So, identified in Spring Town Meeting, getting a handle of our capital strategy. So, Gordian presented an objective third-party report of our capital on June 14, and identified our buildings equate to about $600 million of value. So, what that means is, and this is not our data, this is objective third-party data, what that means is we need to spend about $21 million a year to maintain the condition of our assets, just to maintain. So, right there, we're talking about $20 million of $24 million of free cash. So, that's why we continue to say and reiterate our call to action to the Select Board and Town Management to recapitalize the Building Stabilization Fund, the Capital Stabilization Fund, and institute proper guardrails that align to a longer-term strategy. I will echo comments that we've had fantastic conversations, that we know this is an issue, we're all talking to each other, I think we are aligned, and we look forward to that cooperation and collaboration moving forward. And objective number four, having some type of budget growth targets. So, when we enter the process, we don't have any limits, any constraints, no goal or objective. As I mentioned in Spring Town Meeting, other towns set policy that our budget target should be 4%, 4.5%. We don't have that. And I think this is, or the Finance Committee believes this is a missed opportunity to elevate the discussion that we should be having to earlier in the process, where everybody's engaged, we can talk about our issues collectively instead of at the end of the process. So, I look forward to more conversations across committees and boards, and I thank everybody. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes all of the presentations under Article 1, and as well, don't forget to check out all the written reports from all the boards and committees that are on the town website. All those in favor of receiving and filing all the reports, say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it unanimous, and the motion is passed. At this time, we are going to be moving onward to the Planning Board's report under Article Number Two. It is brought to you by the Planning Board. The reason they have a standalone article is because they are required by state law to report to you versus just to get you informed. So, it is moved in second that the town approved Article Two as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the Planning Board, we have Carrie Leighton, the Chair.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Town Meeting members. Hi, I'm Carrie Leighton. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, here with our update. Eyes text so confusing. Hold on. I'm going to do. I know you just told me. There we go. Okay, same cast you fell in love with last season, but we have added on your kind funding from Spring Town Meeting Ian Sexton, our Assistant Town Planner. Ian is here in the nick of time because Taylor Herman is going to be training for the Olympic sport of parenting in the Boston area. Taylor is expecting his first child in January, and we are very happy to have Ian as backup. Thank you to everyone that backs up the Planning Board. We have support from our Recording Secretary Cheryl Dennis, and thank you to WinCam for bringing us into the homes of our millions of viewers. I can't thank everyone by name, but we touch a lot of the committees in town and a lot of the staff members. They're always wonderful to work with and so helpful. A quick update on MBTA 3A. Remember, in the spring, we approved the MOD district, which was a multifamily overlay district. That legislation has been accepted and approved by the Attorney General, so that is now actionable. Folks could pull permits under that. No one has yet. We are waiting, we're in a funky gap where we're waiting for EOHLC compliance approval. It's mostly been things like relabel this table, you know, move this over here, and once everything is sort of buttoned up, we will be in compliance and approved by the Attorney General. We are also going door-to-door looking for funding for the Economic Feasibility Study, which will allow us to close a gap, getting us our inclusionary housing requirements for the MOD in sync with the CBD. You will hear more about that with Article 26. The design guidelines continue to progress forward, and we will circle back to that. The housing update, this is a slide of No News is News. This will be the last time we update you on our 40B projects. River Street and Cambridge Street are both populating. We're at about 75% occupancy for the River Street development and 55% for Cambridge Street. The approved list here, those are all permitted projects that we have not had significant progress on for different reasons, for different projects. Some of them just need time to get organized. Some of it's just money got expensive. So, we'll update you when we know more. Washington and Swanton and Ten Converse Place are also, for very different reasons, in a kind of a prolonged holding pattern, and we'll let you know when we know more. In terms of our subsidized housing inventory, our affordable housing, we are not in safe harbor status. We're kind of nowhere near it. We've really plateaued at 4.9% of our total housing inventory designated as affordable housing. This includes permitted projects, so we need to make some good progress here. The one update that I can give is that our housing production plan, which had expired, taking us even further out of safe harbor, is nearing completion. It's in kind of the final editing stage from MAPC, and then we can turn that into Actionable Intelligence and come up with our updated plan. Other than that, I like to think that the zoning is creating the opportunity for us to build 40 subsidized housing units per year, but we're definitely not there yet. We have lots of work to do. I will be back to present Article Seven, which is the creation of the Main Street Mixed Use District. We're very excited about this. This is a long labor. A lot of hands have carried this to the line, and I just have the pleasure of getting it over this last stage. Strategy A1, the first thing folks said when they got into the room for the master plan process was North Main Corridor, and this is the realization of those intentions. We have taken the task to envision the public realm improvements, identify development opportunities, and zone for it and create design guidelines around them. So, this will be very much a story of goals that were set and goals that have been, I think, unbiased opinion, have been met. We will circle back to this again with Article Seven. This also does not have design guidelines yet, and that's because we are looking, we are trying to merge two very different styles here. We have had the support of a fantastic consultant, Michael Wang of Form and Place, in creating our design guidelines. Michael is an architect with a beautiful design aesthetic who trusts architects to have beautiful design aesthetics, and we are a town with a very specific idea and a lot of trust problems. And so, we are trying to create a body of, that hearty laugh meant a lot to me. We're trying to create a set of guidelines that will be clear for developers to understand what we're looking for in aesthetic, but still leave some flexibility for creativity and evolution of design over time. I will also be back for Article Eight, talking about accessory dwelling units. Winchester does have an ADU bylaw that was passed at Spring Town Meeting in 2022, and then in August of 2024, the state of Massachusetts passed legislation that allowed ADUs to be built by right on all property that zones single-family or where there's a single-family home that's in existence. Winchester's warrant closes September 23. So, this is a time when a lot of vacations are happening. It is volunteer whack-a-mole. It is volunteer whack-a-mole, and we had to pull this together fairly quickly. We had three options. We could do nothing and let the law go into effect on February 2nd. We could amend our bylaw with a simple sort of surgical excision of the parts that weren't in sync, or we could adjust it to adapt to the new legislation. We chose that, and I will be back for Article Eight. We are also in the application process to get Winchester considered for the Freedom's Way Heritage Area Map. This is an application we put in with the National Park Service in the same way that the National Parks highlights natural areas around the country to go and visit. The Freedom's Way map identifies historically important neighborhoods. We had some of this paperwork submitted years ago, and we've reinvigorated the process. If we were included in the Freedom Way map, it would help us, it would help identify Winchester as significant in the history. You can see we are, we are the dark shadow among towns that have been included, so we want to, we want to step up there. And if we are included, it creates some funding streams and some opportunities for us to offer education. We get a cool sign on the highway, and it helps us, it helps encourage us to take our stewardship of that history seriously. Next on our agenda, again, will be the Housing Production Plan, turning that into actionable steps we can take to improve our inclusionary housing inventory. The Master Plan Implementation Committee will be coming back together in January. We need lots of hands for that. That is kind of a town auditing process of the Planning Board to make sure that we're not only moving forward pet projects of the Planning Board, that we are, that we are holistically moving the master plan forward. So please step up for that. We will be, we will be looking at our site plan review process. We've been getting a lot of spicy feedback about that process, and we agree, I think we have a nice composition on the board right now, to think about ways to do that for smaller projects that are not necessarily well-suited to the project, to the process as it stands. So hopefully, we will have something for you to review at Springtown Meeting. Holton, Swanton, Cross, and Light Industrial, we haven't forgot it, but we are tired. So it is getting, it's getting moved out a little. We're also kind of out of money. So we are going to start working on that as soon as the new year starts, using reports that we have from the past and starting to plan for, hopefully, zoning regulations for you either fall of '25 or more likely, spring of '26. We're excited about that, because I know that's an exciting area for us. The Economic Development Strategic Plan is still moving forward. It's in the research phase, though I don't have a lot of stuff to report on that, but the second year of that process is suggestions for the town for economic development, so we will be reporting on that in the future as well. Opportunities for engaging with us? Please do join the Master Plan Implementation Committee. You can always email us as a group, including our Town Planner, Taylor Herman, at planningboard@winchester.us. You can sign up to receive the Town Planner's newsletter, and you're always welcome at our meetings, Tuesdays at 7:00 PM, usually on Zoom or via WinCam. You know, we plan for the future in Winchester, and I know I ran for my first spot after the 2016 election, because I needed to show my nine-year-old daughter that sometimes we're feeling down, but we're not out. And that nine-year-old has since brought the debate club into the competitive circuit, so they're, they're training the future policymakers, and I'm still standing here before you. So as we plan for the future of Winchester, know that if you're feeling down, you're not out. Do good work, Town Meeting, and keep in touch.
Thank you. You make it very exciting. We can't wait for your, rest of your articles. With that, Article Number Three is a consent agenda. Article Four is being moved, as I said, to a week from Monday. Article Five and Six are, have been pulled from our agenda by those citizens. We will be moving to Article Seven when we return, which is the zoning bylaw amendment for the mixed-use district on North Main Street. At this time, we will be breaking for our precinct meetings. I'm going to give you 30 minutes. You have till 8:00. With that, I highly recommend that everyone make a beeline, if you can, to your meetings, and then as you come back, then stop for snacks and stuff in the restroom, so that you don't leave your precinct waiting for you and hunting you down while you snack.
Do you hope to accept the Planning Board's report?
All those in favor of accepting the Planning Board's report?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimous, and the motion is passed. We will see you at 8:00 to continue on Article Number Seven. All right, Town Meeting members, we are moving on to Article Seven. Before we begin, I want to make sure that you are aware that on page 24 of your motion book, if you want to turn there now, it is under the E section of Historical Review. There is a Scribner's error that I have been notified of, and I want to make it to your attention, so we're going to edit that. And the last sentence of Section E on page 24, Historical Review, it shall read, "The proposed demolition of a building shall be reviewed for historical significance in accordance with Chapter 14, Section 3. It should not be 3.1 of the town of bylaws and subject to the procedures therein." It is moved and seconded that the Town Meeting approve Article Seven as printed in the motion booklet with the minor edit of Section 3 from Section 3.1 under Section E on page 24. This article is being brought to you by the Planning Board. It requires a simple majority vote, as there is affordable housing components in it. On behalf of the Planning Board, their Chair, Carrie Leighton.
Okay, thank you, Madam Moderator. I was told I have an hour. Okay, buckle up, we have a lot to cover. So I am proud to present Article Seven to you. This is the zoning, the rezoning of North Main Street. We are, we are creating a new Section 8.12, which will create the Main Street Mixed-Use District, amending the zoning map and making sure we've updated elsewhere in the bylaw where it's mentioned. This is, again, the realization of work that began before the master plan. When we started the steering committee, the first thing everyone said was, "We need to create an area plan for the North Main Street corridor." And we were tasked with the bullets that I mentioned earlier, and we are here with the zoning guidelines. Where is the mixed, where is the Main Street Mixed-Use District? So it starts at Skilling's down near Stop &amp; Shop in the high school, and extends all the way up to Cross Street, the gateway to Woburn. It is currently zoned as General Business Districts 2 and 3, which is zoning that was not working well for current parcel owners. So we, we've taken a bunch of feedback on this. We have met with property owners. We got feedback on this during the master plan process. We had a bunch of public hearings that sort of got mashed up with the 3A process, and then we separated the two articles so that we could focus on 3A for the spring, and now we're here with Article Seven today. And we, in that listening process, we developed the goals that we have, that we have set and met for today. We've created a mixed-use district. I'm going to circle back to each of these, so don't worry too much about the fine print. We have promoted a vibrant streetscape. We have encouraged sustainable development in the area. We've increased both the housing and the commercial opportunities, and we are supporting adaptive reuse and historic preservation of the area. Okay, so lots to cover, so I'm going to orient you to a few key points here. The special permit granting authority for this district will be the Planning Board. This is, you know, one of the main faces of Winchester from the Center Business District up this main corridor, so that will allow us to quarterback the site plan review process and the special permitting process to be more efficient for applicants for changes to the district. It's also consistent with the Planning Board serving as the SPGA for the CBD and also for the MOD, which is the district we created for 3A. We have divided Main Street into seven sub-districts, that's so that we can be responsive to the abutters of each of the districts, and in the future, if we need to adjust zoning, it's a little more nimble to adjust, to amend a district than the entire corridor. The design guidelines are seated outside of the bylaw. So as mentioned before, the design guidelines are going to be voted on by the Planning Board. We're going to be looking for public feedback and feedback from boards and committees, but that allows us flexibility over time to change the, the design guidelines as needed. We thought a lot about what it would feel like to walk down North Main, so the first thing we did was kind of obsess over the dimensional guidelines, as all the cool kids did this summer. And the, one of the things that we did that's a little different is we set a maximum setback from the set, from the curb, from the street, sorry, from the sidewalks. It's just been a long week. On the, the, when you're, normally when you think of setbacks, you're thinking of a minimum. For these buildings, we set a maximum setback of 10 feet, and that's to keep the street engaged with the, with the businesses that are on the street. If you picture 955 Main, that's a very deep setback, and it's really tempting to put the traffic and the parking in front of the building, and you don't feel particularly engaged with it. So we set a maximum setback to build the buildings, to bring the buildings forward. The exception is that for the very, for the largest buildings, we did set those back an additional 10 feet, because we, we wanted to mitigate the feeling of that large massing as you walk down the street. So if you picture, we'll get back, we'll circle back to that. And then that top floor is setback 50 feet from the road, so that there's sort of an opening up as you look up. So that very top floor, if it's a four-and-a-half-story building, is set a little bit further back than the building, which is setback from the sidewalk. We created a 20-foot setback in the rear, which is where all of the parking will be, to buffer the parking from the abutting properties. And then if you look at the distance from Skilling's up to the gateway to Woburn, you're looking at buildings that are getting smaller, because we're going from the Center Business District, where we want to encourage higher-density development. So a maximum of four-and-a-half stories closer to the Center Business District, if it's a mixed-use parcel, so commercial on the first floor, housing above, and three feet if it's abutting a residential property. It gets a little shorter as you move up the street, and it's different east and west. So on that east side, where the properties are a little deeper and not necessarily abutting housing, buildings are allowed to go to three-and-a-half stories, two-and-a-half if they're abutting a residential neighbor. And on the other side of the more densely populated west side of the street, we're looking at a maximum of three stories. Often, when you incentivize development, you add floors. Oh, if you do more inclusionary housing, you can make it a five-story building. We didn't allow that. We were flexing the, the open space on the parcels, so if, if folks are willing to increase their inclusionary housing contribution to the town, they could build that behind the building and make it a deeper building, but they can't go up, because we didn't want to create a skyscraper corridor, and we didn't want to shadow the adjacent neighborhoods. The effect of this will be to create space for plazas, for hardscaping, for seating in front of the building. We're requiring interior landscaping for larger parking lots, so that we're breaking up those larger masses of parking area and breaking up some of the heat islands. We're requiring street trees and landscaping, and we're, we're looking for an effect similar to what you're seeing with the massing, where it could be a deeper building, but it's not necessarily taller. This is a mixed-use district, so we have updated in response to the, to the request for more flexibility in how buildings can be used. We updated the use tables and expanded from things that were not allowed in GBD 2 and 3. We focused on active uses closer to the Center Business District. Think about your retail, your restaurants, fitness places, you know, things where you're going to have a lot of foot traffic in and out, because we want to foster that active community feeling. We have lower traffic uses as you move towards the dense residential areas. That would be like your, your health services offices or offices where you have folks coming in in the morning, maybe leaving for lunch, hopefully taking a walk, and then going home at the end of the day, but not as much interactive foot traffic. Those are allowed closer to the Center Business District, but not on the first floor, because we want to engage the streetscape as much as possible, like we have in the Center Business District. Automotive uses, I know everyone loves their pit stops on the Autobahn to Woburn, but we are going to try to minimize those by sending automotive services through a special permitting process. There is also a pathway to building an all-residential building if developers do not want commercial space on the first floor, but it is also through the special permitting process. Our current streetscape, you know, it's, we're used to it, but it's not, it could be improved. Some of the things that you'll notice about our current streetscape are that they're more, it's more narrow and inaccessible sidewalks. It's very automotive-friendly, so there's long curb cuts, there's cars kind of coming and going. If you walk down North Main, you have so many opportunities to get hit. We want to reduce that. And there's essentially no trees on half of that street, so we want to increase the green space, so we break up some of those heat islands. We are proposing 12-foot sidewalks, so the sidewalk will partially create the setback on the, on the parcel. So to, so that will be, that has been like an interesting area for folks. So I will let you know that it is very normal during the, during the development application process to negotiate with property owners, who's going to do what? Who's shoveling this? What materials do we agree on? That is a normal step in the development review process, so that will be how we determine what that 12-foot sidewalk looks like and how it gets implemented, but we want to preserve that, that nice wide street to make it a pedestrian-friendly, walkable street. Requiring the setbacks for the larger buildings with a landscape buffer makes it a more pleasant area, the parking in the rear, and then the street trees to not only reduce the heat islands, but also the noise and pollution. The current pedestrian experience, and I spent a weird amount of time measuring sidewalks this summer, so I can tell you, that the sidewalk in front of Book &amp; Board this summer, so I can tell you, that the sidewalk in front of Book &amp; Board in Katana, which is a nice building, is an eight-foot sidewalk. So, to picture the pedestrian experience, it's a nice sidewalk, it's pleasant to walk down, but it is a little narrow. And then, with that zero setback, you've got the building kind of right there. When we did our walk down North Main Street with Town Meeting members, our number-one fan, the sweet kid named Henry, was with us. Henry travels in an adaptive chair that his dad pushes, and the dad just knew he had to keep popping into the street, and it bothered me so much to know that we just don't have the space to accommodate all of our residents. So, that deeper sidewalk will accommodate more comfortable congregating and walking around the street. We're looking for something that feels more like this, where we have space to post public art, we have space for seating, there's still room to walk, and we can plant trees. We have sustainability in this bylaw, which is new, we're very proud of this. We've reduced the minimum parking, so that does not mean we've gotten rid of parking, it means that we have flexibility to negotiate building by building what's necessary for that parcel. The new trend is actually to set the minimum at zero, and we were a real quick nail on that one. The parking spaces are expected to be prewired for electric vehicles and equipped with charging stations. That's to prepare for the future of transportation and to encourage alternative, sustainable forms of transportation, including requiring bike parking. We are asking, again, for the trees and landscaping, and we're asking parcels to do a bit more to mitigate some of the flood risks that we see in this town. So, we automatically assess stormwater drainage, but we're encouraging use of things like infiltration trenches and rain gardens to help each individual parcel absorb more of their rainwater to help with the flooding in town. I think you'll find that this is a nice balance of commercial and residential growth. 60% of the first floor needs to be commercial, and with 70% transparency, that's, you're interacting with those businesses the same way we do in the CBD. You can see what's inside, you can see your friends, you can dodge your neighbors, no, I'm just kidding. You can, you can, you feel like it's an active street. We are allowing larger buildings, so this is growth-friendly. I don't know if I would call it developer-friendly, but it is growth-friendly, and the larger buildings will accommodate more housing and more commercial opportunities. And the use of those plazas and hardscaping and seating will encourage more foot traffic, so that those business owners can be successful in that corridor, which is our primary goal for that. And then, the residential experience is protected because we have capped the height when we're abutting residential neighborhoods. We've increased the parking setbacks to protect them from the impact of parking. We've implemented a neighborhood meeting. Again, we are in charge of the site review process, so we've tightened that up, but we put a neighborhood review process very early in the application process, so that we are hearing from neighbors about concerns about a development that's coming through. Is the parking going to work for you? Is the traffic flow going to work for you? What do you think of the business that's going in? So, they can make adjustments before they're too far in the process. This is allowing the missing middle to be built, parcels that are less expensive than the single-family homes that we have in town, but potentially not quite add-inclusionary housing, that sort of missing middle, that section of housing that we are always talking about. And then, the inclusionary housing guidelines are synchronized with the CBD, so that expectation of contribution to the town's subsidized housing inventory is consistent. And we're hoping, we're hoping that some developers choose to increase that. And we have also worked closely with the Historic Commission to make sure that we're protecting historic structures, either by use or by physical history. That's it.
Oh.[805.13][805.13](Laughter).[806.13][806.13](Applause).
Design guidelines coming next.[810.01][810.01](Applause). Nice job. Just so you know, it's been the 100-year anniversary, for everyone who does not know, of our zoning bylaws. This year marks that 100-year anniversary, and there shortly after, a building department was added to oversee the compliance with both state codes and local zoning. There have been various changes to this zoning bylaw throughout the 100 years and through the leadership of the Planning Board to get to our current zoning laws and what's before you. Next before us, we will hear the recommendation of the Select Board, their Chair, Michelle Pryor.
I think I know this vote, but I'm going to read my notes anyway. Select Board recommended favorable action on this plan. Planning Board has come to two of our meetings with their consultant. We've gone over both the streetscapes, examples of the buildings. It's a very thoughtful approach, and actually, when we had some questions with Planning Board, they gave us some answers. So, yeah, it was favorable action unanimous by the Select Board.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Historical Commission? Their Chair, Jack Lemenezay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I speak on behalf of the Historical Commission, which voted unanimously in support of this article. While the Commission members have long felt that this long-range planning for this important part of town is imperative, we're also very grateful, as Carrie mentioned, for the cooperation and collaboration that we had, both with the Planning Board and the Town Planner, in identifying important historical properties for potential, you know, for protection, so that we work with the developers to ensure that the properties are as best preserved when they're renovated or added on to. I'd like to add also, speaking for myself, that I think the Planning Board and Town Planner did some amazing work here, and I'm not just talking about the presently seated board and the current Town Planner, I'm talking about those who went before, because this has been a long, long process. It's taken countless volunteer hours, dozens of meetings and public hearings to arrive at the point where we are tonight, and I want to thank all of those, including past Town Planning Board members and past Town Planners for all that they've contributed. This is an odd business, this Town Planning, and I'm sure that they would all attest to this. Most of us won't be around to see this plan come to full fruition, but the forthcoming generations of Winchester citizens will. Instead of chaotic development that would have happened without this plan, those future residents will have a thoughtful template and guide to follow to help ensure an attractive and livable environment in the north end of Maine, and for that, they will be grateful. So, thank yourself if you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, may we have a recommendation from the Housing Partnership? On their behalf, their Chair, John Serbeer.
Madam Moderator, thank you. As a reminder, the Housing Partnership Board was created by Town Meeting to advise Town Meeting and other Town Boards on housing-related issues, particularly housing that meets the needs of moderate and middle-income households and individuals. The Board consists of 13 people, six appointed by the Town Moderator, seven representing other Town Boards, including the Select Board, the School Committee, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Disabilities Access Commission. By a vote of nine to one, the Housing Partnership Board recommends a yes vote by Town Meeting to adopt the Planning Board's proposed new zoning for North Main Street. This work has been supported by Michael Wang of Form+Place, and we have been particularly impressed by the guidance that he has provided, developing an approach that will make this a more walkable, physically-friendly neighborhood, combining small commercial with residential development. The result is zoning that provides what is often referred to, as Carrie said, as missing-middle housing through the use of smaller and mid-size buildings. From a Town perspective, it's important that the Planning Board, often, is proposing to use the same inclusionary zoning that is now contained in the Central Business District. This consistency will help to ensure that Winchester's affordable housing goals are achieved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, may we have a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust, their Chair, Marty Jones. You get the big walk. I forgot about that. Maybe I'll work on it for next Thursday. Someone asked if we could have theme songs for each Board and Committee. Go ahead.
We'll vote on it at our next meeting. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, Town Meeting members. I'm here tonight to relay the support of the Affordable Housing Trust that voted unanimously to support this article. We believe that the rezoning will incentivize additional development along North Main Street and will likely be a significant amount of small-scale development because of the nature of property ownership in the area. We think that this will create a diverse mix of housing types and sizes, which are needed to meet the variety of needs of Winchester residents. And specifically, we agree with the Housing Partnership Board and support the inclusionary zoning requirements of this article. From a developer's perspective, to be consistent with what we have across other districts in town is a big plus, and we look forward to additional development that's creating more housing in town as a result of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the recommendations from Boards and Committees, Town Meeting members at this time. If you have questions or comments regarding this article, please make your way to the microphones. Town Meeting members, you will be given a maximum of three minutes. Use your time wisely. When you please come up, please state your name and precinct.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Josh Bears, Precinct 7. Through you to the proponents. Question about parking. We all know the importance of parking, obviously, for residential, but also commercial. Are there any ways that we could encourage subterranean or basement-built parking among these developments?
To the Town... Oh, okay. To our Town Planner. Welcome. Can you please provide Town Meeting information regarding parking opportunities, subterranean?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Yes, a part of the site plan process, a part of the development approval process, the Planning Board will consider all sorts of different parking options. If subterranean is the most acceptable option for a particular development, then that is what would be utilized, and in many cases, encouraged, as long as the environment would support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
So, Precinct 8, Hank Lee. So, I have a question, and I have a motion to amend. First question, I do you, Madam Moderator. So, the question to Planning Board or Town Planner, Planning, anyway, Town Planner. So, the first question, I think on your slide, how do you ensure that 60% mixed-use commercial space on the first floor? Because I'm looking at the table of standard requirement, it really doesn't say clearly how you ensure that 60% of commercial space on the first floor.
To the Planning Board, can you please provide Town Meeting information, how you will ensure that the 60% of commercial will be provided?
I think that would just be negotiated with the property owner, and it would be kind of basic math on how the parcels are arranged on that first floor, and it will probably be different owner to owner. But the requirement is set that 60% or more needs to be commercial use. I don't know if that answered your question.
But I think that should be defined on the requirement standard to Madam Moderator, and to you, to the Planning Board. So, I think that should be defined in the requirement table.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
That might be a...
Do you want to take a moment to consult with the Town Planner?
I would love that. Thank you so much.
While they do that, do you mind we take another comment? And then, we'll come back.
So, to you, Madam Moderator, to the motion, I would make a motion to amend. Particularly, on the table, historically significant structure on page 24, there are a couple historical structure have been left out, including 910 Main Street, as well as 898 Main Street. That's on the two corners of Canal Street. So, if you check with Macris, you will find those two buildings actually on the list of the historical structure list. So, here, I would like to make a motion to amend to include those two buildings on the table.
Can you give me those addresses once again, please?
898 Main Street and also 910 Main Street.
898 Main Street and 910 Main Street?
Yes, correct.
And can you define to Town Meeting what those two buildings are, so they know? One is the restaurant?
So, 910 Main Street building is a Sakura Japanese restaurant. That's on the north corner of Canal Street and Main Street intersection. 898, I think, has been used as mental health clinic, so that's also on the list of Macris' database. That's still considered to be above average significant structure that on the list. So, I would make a motion to amend the table to include those two historical structures.
All right. So, the Town Meeting member is asking for a motion to amend the article for Table 8.12.6. With that, they're asking for the addition of two additional sites for that to be included in the historically significant structures in the MSD, MSMD, and as they noted, they believe it's in the Macris, which is the historical registry of the state. We have a second. Do we have recommendations from any of the Boards or Committees? The Planning Board, are you, is this a friendly amendment, or the Planning Board is telling me they are in favor? Historical Commission, are you in favor?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Officially, I can't say that we are, but I think it was an oversight on our part, and I don't know how those buildings got left off, but the motion is certainly welcomed by Historical Commission. Those are two historic buildings. I don't know how they got left off, and... Yeah, that was, we were talking about that, yeah. The point was that the Chair made was that 910 is scheduled to be torn down, but that doesn't lessen its historical value. And I think it was just oversight, so I would support this. I mean, as Chair of the Historical Commission, I would support it, and I'm pretty confident that my Commission would as well.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on this amendment? Simple majority required? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimous, and the motion is amended. Further on the question?
Hi, Mark Fublowitz, Precinct 1. First of all, I thoroughly enjoyed the North Main Street tour last month. It was very enlightening to see those diagrams and hear the plans in situ. Thank you for putting in the effort for that. And you've got to love a well-deployed tape measure. It's a safe bet that there's going to be an awful lot of extra demand for parking. It's a frequently asked question, and with the restaurants that are opening up and also the small commercial sites along the North Main Street corridor, it's a safe bet that there will be a lot of people coming. We're trying to draw them into town, and where do they park? Is there enough parking, on-street parking for this? And specifically, I did see that on page 15, under Commercial Uses, the number 40 describes "commercial parking lot or garage, a privately operated facility that provides space for parking under allowable, under special permitting." So, my question is, not just that it is allowed, but is there, has there been discussion of how to encourage the establishment of parking facilities? That's the first thing, part of it. The second part is, it does say "commercial parking," but what about municipal parking? Are they different? Are they the same? I note in Lexington and Arlington and Belmont, there is at least some municipal parking, and what can be done to encourage the expansion of the presence of that, perhaps on the North Main Street corridor, but perhaps in other locations, to be able to handle the additional parking load, were this to be a successful endeavor?
Can you clarify what you mean by municipal parking?
That is a municipally-owned and operated parking lot, as opposed to someone who proposes and builds a facility of some sort.
A government-owned parking?
Pardon?
You're speaking about government-owned parking. I just wanted to clarify. Is that correct?
Well, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had your question correct.
Yes, yes.
So, to the Planning Board, can you please provide more information regarding the parking, private, public, and municipal options available under the bylaw? And with that, I think you might benefit the meeting to have an understanding of what the minimal means, that it's the floor, not...
Yeah, so, the minimum is the minimum required for that property, but it could be expanded. If we know that it's going to be a use that's going to require a lot of traffic, that would be part of our development review process, would be expecting that that number goes up, and I would think, I would think business owners would want, and residents would want the opportunity to park. So, it depends, the minimums have dropped because sometimes you have, in a mixed-use, you have daytime commercial activity that requires a certain amount of parking, and nighttime residents who come home. So, you sort of think about how those dovetail with each other. I want to take the opportunity to point out one thing that we're excited about in this district, which is the possibility to collaborate with the Select Board on making sure that we're doing a great job... we're doing a great job of making sure this is a cohesive plan. I think the only way to get municipal parking on the corridor would be if municipal uses are allowed, that's in the use table. So if the town purchased a parcel and chose to build parking there, then I think that would be a municipal opportunity, but I'm just going to hand that one off to my friend, Chair Pryor. Other than that, it's been very much on our minds, and we will...a lot of the answers that I'll have for you will be parcel to parcel.
So why'd you make the joke? Is the Select Board are responsible for parking? So they carry that burden of dealing with that on a day-to-day level. Did that answer your question, or did you have a follow-up? Okay, thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Nixon, Precinct 1. I'd like to call the meeting's attention to the clause on electric vehicles on page 18 of the motion book. And I'd just like to read briefly the first sentence, so this is in the parking section under standards. "At least 20% of all parking spaces, including existing spaces, must be prewired for electric-vehicle charging stations, with an additional 20% equipped with active EV charging stations." So I actually call that to your attention, because I rise tonight with a friendly motion to amend a quick analogy on the Lynch Elementary School. When we were in early concept and schematic design, we also kind of aspired for pre-wiring for future EV. We are building EV parking spaces today with chargers that will be there in the fall of '25. But we also wanted to have future flexibility for additional future EV charging. And while we initially used that term "prewired," we pivoted away from that with the understanding that EV chargers come in many varieties. There are AC, there are DC, there's Level 1, there's Level 2. It's very difficult, in fact, sort of unknowable, for a contractor to put cable in the ground where they don't know what kind of equipment it's actually going to be supporting. And so because the Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code acknowledges and uses the expression "EV-ready," my proposal to the planning board at their hearing last week was a friendly amendment to this first sentence that would read, "At least 20% of all parking spaces must be EV-ready with conduit for future electric-vehicle charging stations." So that proposal, Madam Moderator, simply allows the flexibility to pull whatever cable is necessary in the future. And I would just add the Mass Stretch Energy Code, although it does use the expression "EV-ready," and it does require space and electrical panels to provide power for EV stations in the future, it is silent on how one gets from point A to point B with the cable. So that's the intention in calling for the conduit to be provided. Thank you.
There is a motion to amend. The planning board is a friendly motion?
Second.
It is a friendly motion to the planning board. We have a second from Sam Allison, town meeting member. And the motion to amend is to change Section 8, on page 18, Section I, "electric vehicles" to read, "At least 20% of all parking spaces must be EV-ready with conduit, including existing spaces, must be prewired for electric-vehicle charging stations with additional 20% equipped with EV charging stations." Is that correct?
I think you got it. I'm proposing the change to be, "At least 20% of all parking spaces must be EV-ready with conduit for future electric-vehicle charging stations." Comma, "with an additional 20% equipped with active." So there's no change there.
All right. So "At least 20% of all parking spaces must be EV-ready with conduit for future electric-vehicle, EV, charging stations, with an additional 20% equipped." And then we go onward as written. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, D of Jerez Planning Board. A friendly amendment to the friendly amendment. There is one phrase that seems to be missing, that is, "including existing spaces." So everything Chris said, "including existing spaces..."
And then "must be EV-ready of conduit."
I accept the friendly amendment to my friendly amendment, Madam Moderator.
Can we get a second on the friendly to the friendly, please?
We're all friends here.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment?
I just have a quick question for clarity for what he actually meant. So do you want copper run in the conduit?
Can you please get to the microphones, so everyone can hear, please? There's a question on the motion to amend...to motion to amend.
So the question really is, do you want copper running the conduit? Or do you just want the conduit run, so cable can be pulled later? Because if you state "with conduit," you're implying that you're running the copper before. But if you're implying...if you're just stating that you want to put the conduit down, that opens you up for Level 1, 2, or 3, depending on the conduit size.
To town meeting member, can you please provide clarity on, if you want, the wiring included in the conduit?
So no, the point is, knowing what wire to put in the ground is sort of unknowable. You can pull wire in conduit, but just putting conduit in the ground, it's just pipe.
Just pipe.
Right, but that doesn't clarify with it. All the copper's going to be laid via conduit, or go through conduit. It's just part of the code. So the question is, do we want to have the bylaw state we're just running conduit with the owner's ability to pull later? Or do we want to imply that it's happening as we got it?
Hold on one moment. To the planning board. Can you please provide town meeting, if you would like the...
I'm not here to feign expertise on EV wiring, but I am here to remind you that the regulations can define some of the points that are not included. So if we have the...I think we have space in the regulations to be more clear about exactly what should be prepared ahead of time. That's also the case for the question about the...
60%?
Yes.
So in the review process, it will be taken up and defined by the planning board hereafter. All right. Any other questions on the motion to amend? Motion to amend? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Returning back to the motion as amended, there's a few amendments on it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill McPadden, Precinct 7. Question, you can direct as appropriate through you. Great plan, I applaud it. Fantastic thinking. And as I'm thinking forward, well, have we done any type of assessment on the power and the water and the sewer, and like the infrastructure that's in place there to support this? And I know it's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to happen over time. And is there something that the town may eventually have to do preemptive to try and make sure everything is there to encourage this development?
Thank you. To our town planner, has there been any evaluation done of the infrastructure of that area of town to take on this much development in the future?
We've been working hand-in-hand with the engineering department throughout the entirety of this study. We know that for any immediate development, if that were to happen, we have plenty of capacity, power, water, sewer, all that. Over the course of the next 10, 15, 25 years, we'll work with the engineering department to ensure that that capacity remains above what is necessary.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. After this, I believe we're going to go and take them vote. We have one more. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, I'm Dorothy Symboli, Precinct 6. Through you to, I think, the Chair of the Planning Board, or Town Planner, or maybe both. What drove the decision to have the planning board be the special permit granting authority on this article? And what is the pro and con of doing that versus having the ZBA being the special permit granting authority?
To the planning board, can you please provide town meeting members why for this article? The planning board is a special permit granting authority for the special zoning for North Main Street.
The primary decision there was consistency across all of our sort of main corridors from the center business districts, the MOD, or the 3A, and the MSMD. The planning board will be the special granting...special permit granting authority for all three. So it's essentially to keep consistency across the face of Winchester.
Thank you. At this time, I said I was going to call the vote. For all those, get your clickers out. We are going to use them and warm them up. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question on that 60%?
No, just another comment and question.
Quickly.
Okay. Precinct 8, Hank Lynn. I just want to take along for the previous comment. So on Main Street, we do have a lot...I do like to support the landscape of the Main Street. However, I didn't take along that infrastructure comment. So Main Street, we do have a lot of electricity poles. I think that need to be improved or removed in order to support the vision of improving the landscape.
Thank you for that comment. That's been being worked on for years, to get the power for North Main Street underground. It is a very expensive thing to do, but for all those who are reviewing those permits, keep that in mind. From there, we are going to use our clickers to vote. We are voting on Article 7. Article 7 is in a vote in favor is to include Section...the new Section 8.12 in our zoning bylaws for a Main Street mixed-use district. A vote in the "no" means that you do not want the zoning added into our zoning bylaws. We're going to do 30 seconds. Not even. What do we usually do? Well, 30, I guess.
Is that a majority or a two-thirds vote?
Nope, it's a two-thirds vote. That was a misstatement on my part. I was one article ahead of us. As always, I'm going to let it scroll all the way through. If you have any issues, please stand up and notify the town clerk in the back of the auditorium. That would be 94. There are 130 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative, four abstaining, and the motion passes. Thank you to the planning board for all your work on Article 7. It's time for you to present Article 8. Oh, can you go tell?
Thank you for that, everyone.
Before you begin, just so the history for town meeting on the ADU is back in Fall Town Meeting 2022, November 10th, if you want the exact date, we voted 104 to 46 to amend Section 3.2 and 10 of our zoning bylaws by adding a section defined as accessory dwelling units, which will then permit accessory dwelling units in our town. Article 8, that's coming before you, is asking town meeting to make amendments to this section, and also to bring it in accordance with amended state laws. On behalf of the planning board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I'm your co-host for the evening, Carrie Leighton of the planning board. Article 8 is, as she mentioned, updating Section 3.2.2. So what is an ADU? So an accessory dwelling unit is a secondary residential living space that's located on the same lot as a single-family home. It has to have a unique entrance. It can be configured many different ways. It can be a freestanding building, it can be attached to a home, renovated garage, above a garage, a new floor. It has to have a unique entrance, which can be off of an interior common area or a door to the outside. And the difference between this and your average addition is that it can have its own cooking space. So sort of the stove is the deciding factor of whether it's an ADU. This is a typo. We're just really excited about the streetscape, so you're going to love it. We couldn't get it fixed in time. So what we passed at Spring Town Meeting in 2022 was one ADU per single-family or duplex. It could be up to half the square footage of the primary home to a maximum of 900 square feet. It could not be used as a short-term rental, so the rental time period minimum is 31 days. It had to be owner-occupied. A resident of the property had to be 62 years of age or older, or anyone on the property be a person living with a disability. And it had to be architecturally similar to the primary home. The legislation that was passed by the state in August of '24, it's by right. Any single-family zoned parcel, or any parcel with a single-family home on it, can now build an ADU by right. And same-size requirements also can be restricted to not be used as a short-term rental. There is no parking required per the state regulation. If the home is located with...if the ADU is located within .5 miles of a transit stop, that does include bus stops, we clarified. So that's a lot of Winchester. And there is no more than one space required if it's beyond the .5 miles of a transit stop. So we had some options. We had about a month to do this, and we could have done nothing, which would be the same result as if we indefinitely postponed this article. The law will go into effect, the state law...the regulations on the state law are still being written, and it will go into effect February 2nd of 2025. We would be...we would have our bylaw in place, but the pieces that make it more restrictive than the state requirement would automatically be severed. So it would no longer need to be owner-occupied. The age restriction would be removed, and the disability restriction would be removed. If a permit is pulled in that period of time before our own bylaw is amended, it could be constructed based on exactly what is available through some...you know, through the least restrictive version of the state versus the town bylaw. We could have amended the bylaw to do sort of a surgical excision of those pieces, or we could have adapted the bylaw to be a new piece of legislation, or a more thoroughly amended piece of legislation, which is what we chose to do. The reason that we chose to adapt our existing bylaw was because the uses have exploded for ADUs. We are a very pro-ADU board in general. We're excited about this opportunity for the residents of Winchester. But it has gone from an opportunity that's available only to allow elders to age in place and to create more flexible housing for folks with disabilities. Now it's everything. It's the adult children coming home, it's housing, you know, potential childcare support, relocating adult siblings who are in transition. It could be an interesting way to do cluster housing. You could use it for longer-term rentals. It does not need to be owner-occupied properties anymore. And I listed affordable housing here. The town cannot require this to be affordable housing, but a homeowner could take their non-deed-restricted home and deed-restrict the rental on their property, which I think is an interesting thing to keep in mind for future initiatives. So we went ahead and amended the ADU bylaw. What we've done in our new version is, we have one ADU allowed per single-family home. The duplex has changed to be allowed through special permits, same as if there are going to be multiple ADUs on one parcel. So that could be allowed through a special permitting process. Same-size requirements, separate entrance required, still not used as short-term rentals. And we are requiring ADUs to be subjected to site plan review. The site plan review is a slightly unusual approach for when you're changing use, but because this is now available to every property in Winchester and will increase the population, we thought it would be important to be able to sort of review how that's unfolding across the town thoughtfully. The site plan review process is cumbersome. It adds a cost, and it adds a bunch of paperwork. So your application goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, who distributes it to all of the boards in town, and somehow I left Disability Access Committee off of this list. But essentially, you would prepare a packet for each of these groups. It's a lot of labor to get that waived. We are aware of the fact that this is a cumbersome process. The recommendations from each of the boards goes back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is not a way to block a permit. It's a way to get feedback on the parcel as it goes through its development plan. We felt like with the opportunity to increase the density of the town, I mean, we could technically roughly double the density of the town, it was important to have these committees weigh in on how we're doing that. So we do it thoughtfully, and so that these ADUs are welcome to the neighborhoods. The examples of things that are reviewed in site plan review include stormwater management. So we think, okay, well, if it's a certain size, it's going to go through stormwater management review at engineering anyway. But if you're thinking about this happening potentially across five properties, you know, along a street going from the Fells down to Washington Street, you're increasing the impervious surface area across parcels instead of on one. So we wanted to be able to sort of think about, are we managing water thoughtfully as we allow this increase? We wanted to be able to think about pedestrian and vehicular safety and manage headlight layers. Can we tilt the driveway a different way? Can we, can we tilt the driveway a different way? Can we scoot the building forward to save this hundred-year-old tree? Can we ask for landscaping to shield things like HVACs that you're putting in for your, for your ADU if it's freestanding? Um, are we able to get, you know, feedback from the historic commission if that applies? Design review helps with the size, the scale, and the look of the, of the new ADU. Um, you know, is it accessible? Is conservation commission? They would be triggered for the Wetlands Protection Act anyway, but we appreciate their feedback. Um, so I understand that this will be, the, our own board debated the place of site plan review, and it stimulated the conversation about creating a streamlined process so that we are not adding cost burden to our most vulnerable citizens. But because of the, the reach of this, um, we felt like it was important to make sure that we're doing it thoughtfully. Um, I don't think I actually have other slides. I think we'll just open it up to discussion.
Okay. Uh, may we have a recommendation from the select board? Chair Michelle Pryor.
Uh, thank you. Select board recommended favorable action on this article. There were some concerns, um, in our debate at the table around site plan review adding additional time and burden, potentially delaying, uh, the realization of ADUs. But ultimately, we came around in favor, uh, as a board, and it was four to one. Um, should also point out that while the state law sort of requires this, having some ability to influence what it looks like within our town, we felt was appropriate to exercise that authority. And, um, doing nothing, we have to sort of throw out all of the, the current regulations and, and guidelines, review processes that we have. So that's where the select board landed on this, and, uh, I think well done by the planning board with a pretty short runway. So thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust? Your Chair Marty Jones. I'll be taking recommendations for walk-up songs for all the boards and committees. You can email them to your moderator. H Von Marying at Winchester.us.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, I'm here to report tonight to town meeting that the Affordable Housing Trust had a long discussion about this Article eight and unanimously voted unfavorable action. The Affordable Housing Trust was a strong advocate for the ADU bylaw that was passed by town meeting in twenty twenty-two. We support ADUs as a way to address the need for housing in town and provide a mix of sizes and types of housing for everybody in Winchester. We do not support the bylaw as drafted because of the inclusion of site plan review. Site plan review was not a requirement of the original ADU bylaw previously passed by town meeting. Site plan review is not uniform across the Commonwealth. As you heard in the presentation, Winchester's current site plan review process is generally only applicable to situations involving significantly larger square footage or substantive change in site slope and grading. Winchester's site plan review standards are quite rigorous, and unlike those of many other towns, require zoning board of appeal, approval, review by four, maybe five, other town boards and committees, and a list of eleven goals and standards to be considered during the process. The requirement for all proposed ADUs to be subject to site plan review is, in our view, excessive regulation of this housing type. Under this new state law, by right, ADUs are limited to a maximum of nine hundred square feet. Currently in Winchester, any building owner may construct an addition or an accessory structure of this size, provided it meets setback and other dimensional requirements, without being subject to site plan review. The ADU would support the removal of site plan review requirement and maintaining the current design requirement that is in the bylaw passed previously, that the ADU, quote, "be constructed similarly in style to the primary residence on the property." Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Housing Partnership Board? Their Chair, John Sevier.
Uh, Madam Moderator, after, uh, more than an hour of discussion with three members of the planning board present, the Housing Partner, Partnership Board voted seven to one to recommend indefinite postponement of Article eight. Uh, multiple factors, uh, influenced this decision. Uh, the proposed amendments are intentionally designed to discourage accessory dwelling units from being proposed and built. Uh, this is contrary to the intent of the ADU bylaw that was approved in twenty twenty-two. Uh, it's also contrary to the intent of the state ADU law passed this past summer, where the desire is to facilitate, uh, ADU construction rather than to slow it down or to, uh, to engage in a long review process. State officials, whoops. State officials, uh, said on Monday in a webinar that preliminary guidance and regulations for ADUs will be issued in late fall or early winter. Uh, the, the town, we feel the town should wait until after this guidance and associated regulations are issued before making adjustments to Winchester's current ADU bylaw. Uh, the planning board has admitted that these proposed amendments were developed in a rushed manner, uh, one month, and in part, this is the reason they chose not to call upon the expertise of the ADU working group. This is a group of residents who spent the better part of a year researching the experience with, uh, ADUs in other Massachusetts communities as well as nationwide, and then used this knowledge to develop the town's current ADU bylaw. The Housing Partnership Board recommends that the planning board utilize the knowledge of the ADU working group in updating the current proposal. Uh, rather than relying on the building commissioner to review ADU applications as currently being done, uh, what we've heard is the planning board is proposing a full site plan review be conducted for each site plan, for each ADU application. Uh, this is the most serious concern of the Housing Partnership Board. Uh, Winchester's current review process, as has been described, involves five separate town boards. Uh, it has been widely characterized as expensive and time-consuming. Uh, further, uh, the state said on Monday that a review of an ADU application should be no more stringent than the review conducted for construction of a new, smaller, single-family home and desirably less demanding since an ADU is limited to a maximum of nine hundred square feet. Winchester, uh, does not require of, currently, a full site plan review for smaller, single-family homes unless certain dimensional, uh, requirements are not satisfied. The current proposal for full site plan review, uh, therefore, is likely, uh, exceeds what the state will allow. In summary, the Housing Pa, Partnership Board concluded that additional work should be undertaken, especially with coming up with a simpler review process. Uh, we're pleased that the planning board agrees with that. Uh, we feel that, uh, it would be better for, to bring both this revised site plan review process and, uh, an updated ADU amendment to Spring Town Meeting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this time, that concludes the recommendations of the boards and committees. I'm gonna read the motion into the record, and at, then from there, town meeting members, if you can make your way to the microphones for your comments and questions. It is moved and seconded that the town amends section three point two point two accessory dwelling units in section ten definitions of the Winchester zoning bylaw as printed in the warrant. This requires a simple majority to pass. We'll go with, go ahead.
Ann Sarah, precinct one. I think the argument that, uh, you shouldn't have any site plan review because it should be just the same as a nine-hundred-foot house is flawed. Because these, uh, ADUs can be a second house on a single, in a single-family home, uh, zoned area. So we don't want two houses in one, in a, in a, in a zone that is for a single-family home unless it does have some review. I would support that we could immediately move to have a, a graduated site plan review process so that there was a different kind of site plan review for, uh, a person that had a disability or could come before the board, and it could be very, um, casual. But there should be some kind of site plan review. We can get that graduated site plan review into place. I mean, our planning board has done a lot of work in a short period of time, and I don't wanna lump this on them, but I suspect they could get this into place, uh, fairly quickly. And I would say that the short months between now and, say, Spring Town Meeting means that we should put some kind of site re, plan review now and then revise it so that we have a, uh, a graduated site plan review. It also gives us an opportunity, for example, to increase our site plan review for commercial installations that might make noise. And that's something that's missing, for example, in our current site plan review for large installations. So I'd recommend that we do keep site plan review, vote for this as-is. I think it's really well-done, uh, and, and then we can change our site plan review as necessary.
Thank you. Um, I, there is some statements in there. I just wanna give the planning board an opportunity to, uh, provide response to it. To the planning board, can you provide town meeting, if this were to pass as-is, are you amenable to coming back with a site plan review light? Um, in the spring?
Thank you for the comments. Uh, we, we immediately looked at, um, at whether or not we were able to waive site plan review for, that's what I was gonna say at the end, I forgot to, um, we, we immediately looked into whether or not we could waive site plan review based on the criteria that had been established in the bylaw as originally written, and we are not able to waive site plan review based on any population criteria. So that includes income, that includes age, that includes disability status. It has to be site plan review or no site plan review. But we can change, and I introduced in the overview of what the planning board will be up to next, um, a more streamlined site plan review process. And we, we are, we have to, that has to be passed by town meeting, and we are but mere mortals, and we couldn't get that pulled together in time for fall, but we do have the intention of bringing a, a refreshed version for the spring.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Uh, Deobserius, precinct eight. Um, I wanna address a couple of things first. Um, I'm here mostly as a precinct eight town meeting member, but I was on the planning board when we considered revising site plan review a few years ago in order to reduce its burden. Uh, we spent quite a bit of time, we worked with the building department, we worked with the engineering department, and we discovered it was actually not an easy topic to disentangle because you have to somehow come up with separate criteria, and it turned out that we would be asking people to do almost as much as a real site plan review. So that's the history on that. But for the rest of this, um, uh, good evening, town meeting. I come before you, um, to move for indefinite postponement of this article. Um, while I understand the board's motivation for the proposed changes to our ADU bylaw, I disagree with them. I fundamentally, I find that these changes result in a pronounced inequity in opportunity for homeowners and little, if any, benefit to the town. There has been little outreach to the stakeholders who came together to craft our original ADU bylaw, and this change puts significant burdens on the two populations. We hope to provide more housing opportunities for, namely, people with disabilities and seniors. Our existing zoning plan, bylaw requires site plan review for residential lots based on true criteria, total square footage of the living area of the structures, and for significant changes to the grade. The site, the square footage requirements are generous. In a twenty-thousand-square-foot zones, a finished size of six thousand square feet would trigger it, drops at five thousand square feet in the ten-thousand-square-foot zones, thirty-six hundred, and the sixty-five hundred square feet in duplex zones. Any by-right project which results in a smaller size does not require anything other than a building permit. So if you live in a twenty-thousand-square-foot zone and your house is built after nineteen forty-five, you can get a demolition permit with a pro forma review, tear the house down, build up to a five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine-square-foot McMansion with nothing but a building permit. Contrast this with an ADU, which is restricted to nine hundred square feet. The changes in this article will require all ADUs to go through the site plan review, adding cost and time to a project, while demolition and construction of a six-thousand-square-foot McMansion evades this entirely. Site plan review is designed, is intended in part to compensate for impacts to neighboring lots. It's difficult to see how a nine-hundred-square-foot addition results in a greater negative impact than a five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine-square-foot home. Are there any impacts unique to the fact that this is a new dwelling unit? On any lot where an ADU might be built, I could build a structure with the exact same footprint and neighborhood impact.
Do you have each your three minutes?
Uh, may I have, uh, another minute, please?
Town meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those not?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I could house the exact same number of people, put the exact same number of cars on the lot. I don't see how the neighborhood impact differs, but an ADU would require a site plan review and a simple addition of the scale, same scale would not. It has been argued that the new state ADU bylaw creates essentially two-family zones where there are now single-family zones, and that requires more oversight. My question is why? We already have duplex zones in town, and as long as the lots and structures are conforming, they do not require site plan review. I don't think that requiring site plan review for ADUs provides any benefit to the town over our existing rules governing structure coverage. It's an unfair burden on homeowners who wish to create a small addition to their existing structures, while larger additions or demo and build can move on without review. I urge the planning board to think through this again, to identify in ta, in detail the impacts that are unique to ADUs and narrowly define, if required, levels of re, review desired, required. The language in this motion does substantially more harm than good. I hope you will join me in voting for indefinite postponement so the planning board can come back after further review and further conversations with affected stakeholders. Thank you.
I second the motion.
There is a motion to indefinitely postpone. It's been seconded. Do we have a recommendation from the, the sponsor on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Select board, can you please get your thoughts together on the IP? They do, do, did you wanna give what the pros and cons to? Without, they do not have a recommendation. Did you want to provide town meeting, um, if they go back and, if they IP it, what that means, and if they don't?
Uh, we, I, I think in the same way that you're conflicted about this, the board has been conflicted about this. I think we're elected to represent the town, and I think the town is not sure the best way to proceed here. And so, um, we have lost a member, he went home, so we're a two-to-two, and, and, um, we leave it, uh, we, we trust town meeting with this decision. We are not looking to increase the burden on vulnerable residents, but we do feel like this is an opportunity to increase the population, and we voted the way we voted. So, uh, without someone to break our tie, we, we leave it to town meeting.
Thank you. Um, do we have a recommendation from the select board? She's coming. Chair of the select board?
So we're a little split ourselves. Um, we have two noes for IP. We have, uh, well, no, two yeses for indefinite postponement, a no for indefinite postponement. Can we just strike, strike, probably, site plan review, section ten? Um, I'm not sure that we have a strong favorable action to IP or not, but I'd say we'd be leaning that way.
At this time, town meeting, is, the debate is whether we should indefinitely postpone, indefinitely postponing the article. Um, everyone does not like when they use the word, but it is what it is. It kills the article. Um, so, uh, we are only debating if we should, uh, and debate and close this article and not take it under consideration. Any, any comments, questions about IP? Please come to the microphone if you have questions on this motion to indefinitely postpone the article.
Hi, good evening. Seamus Brady, precinct one, fifteen Columbus Street. Uh, you've all heard my thoughts on indefinite postponement before, so I'll just repeat them. I don't think it's useful. I don't think we should do it now. I think it's rarely useful. So let's keep going.
Further on the question?
Pamela Court, precinct five. Um, I do have a question. I'm, I'm in favor of indefinitely postponing because I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done to figure out how we can do things that protect the town without unduly burdening the people for whom, um, these units were initially intended for. So my question is to the planning board, um, one of my questions at the public hearing that you gave involved whether or not there could be, uh, conditions put on site plan review, and I know that some are not legal, so that we can't say there's no site plan review for somebody over the age of sixty-two or somebody who has, um, for somebody over the age of 62 or somebody who has a disability. But I was wondering if there were other ways. For instance, do you have to do a site plan review on an ADU that is contained entirely within the other building, and is that an exclusion that could be put in there? Do you -- one that is attached and 900 square feet or less? Can those kinds of conditions be placed on there? And I kind of opined on whether or not having a council specifically for the planning board that is -- has expertise in zoning wouldn't be able to give some really pointed guidance on this, ways that you can achieve the same thing without breaking any state laws and still having some site plan review but not all, and without redefining site plan review. So the question is, can that -- can those things be done, and has that been considered? And isn't that something that would be worthwhile doing over the next six months? Thank you.
To the Town Planner, can you please provide Town Meeting, if you can modify the triggers, that trigger site plan review, to make it light?
It is certainly possible. It is something that, over the next several months, if especially if indefinite postponement is the choice, it's something that we can look into. It's not something that has been prepped for the Article 8 as written tonight.
Okay, thank you. So I would argue in favor of indefinite postponement, to give them an opportunity to do that, and I'm incredibly grateful for the amount of worth the planning board has done. It's been a ton. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question to indefinitely postpone, that's all we're talking about.
Madam Moderator, Samantha Allison, Precinct 3. I threw you to the planning board. I see the bullet points here about what happens if we indefinitely postpone. I'd appreciate just a little more clarity of what are the implications of the indefinite postponement? Does it just mean that all the state law rules apply, and sort of what's the downside?
To the planning board, the state law goes into effect February 2nd, 2025. If this is indefinitely postponed, can you explain what the pluses and minuses are of having no changes to our bylaw as it currently stands?
I think we just have so many unknowns that the benefit of not indefinitely postponing is to use the levers the state has offered us to have our hands on the process as much as possible, and with the rules and regulations kind of up in the air from the state, we're just trying to create some kind of certainty about what lies ahead. So anything that would be -- I saw my own bullet and realized I forgot to say it. So the other aspect of indefinite postponement is that if our bylaws have not been adjusted to the state law in time, you can't sashay into the building commissioner's office and just, you know, show them something you scribbled on a napkin. You have to be prepared to build an ADU, but if you pull the permits, any time between now and when we adjust our bylaw, the ADU could be built as approved by the building commissioner, and then if we pass different legislation in the spring, that would not apply because as long as you begin construction within six months and continue to progress on your project, your project would still live under what was approved when you got your permit.
Thank you. Further on the question, indefinitely postpone?
Mark Fablois, Precinct 1. Just a point of clarification on that prior question, and that is, is there anything that, having let the deadline pass, would be lost in terms of our opportunities? And would -- is there anything that would be lost irrevocably because of the missing of that deadline?
To the planning board, can you provide Town Meeting information on the loss that we may?
I think per the legislation presented to you this evening, we would lose the ability to review it by site plan review, and otherwise I think we are in sync with the state regulations. That was our goal. And the state regulations allow site plan review, just to be very clear. That's the only lever that they give you, and that was why we put it in. So I don't think we lose anything in particular because the state law would go into effect except for the right to review the projects.
Further on the question to indefinitely postpone?
Madam Moderator, Dorothy Semboli, Precinct 6. I would urge Town Me -- through you to Town Meeting, I would urge Town Meeting to not indefinitely postpone. I think we need to hear from some people that it's kind of critical timing-wise to have this gap between now and/or February and Spring Town Meeting, when a lot of building permits could be issued and without the protections of this article. And one of the things I was going to ask, and I will ask if we don't indefinitely postpone, is I was going to ask our building inspector, Tom Kennedy, to speak to Town Meeting about how many inquiries he's had about the change, about people wanting to build ADUs since the state law was passed.
I actually think that might be important information for Town Meeting to have. To our building commissioner, could you please provide Town Meeting information about the inquiries you are getting regarding ADUs at this time? Our building commissioner, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you need a walk-up song, too?
Excuse me? To date, we've had six applications. One has been completed, five have been processed. However, over the past few months, we have seen an increase in inquiries about ADUs. It was very quiet when we first implemented it, and it has really opened up.
Thank you. Further on the question to indefinitely postpone? There is a motion to move the vote. Do we have a second? At this time, we go immediately to take a vote to move the vote. That means you are voting to decide if we stop debating on indefinitely postponing. There is no debate on this. It requires a simple -- it requires -- Requires a two-thirds vote. We are voting at this time to make a decision if you would like to end debate on indefinitely postponing. A vote in the affirmative means we will end the debate, and we will go to immediately taking the vote to indefinitely postpone. A vote in the negative means that we will continue debating whether we should indefinitely postpone. A two-thirds majority vote is required for the passing. We will be using our clickers. There are 80 in the affirmative, 54 the negative. The motion fails, and we return to debating if we should indefinitely postpone this article. Further on the question to indefinitely postpone, who's next in line?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill McGonigal, Precinct 3. And I'm here to say that I am against indefinitely postponing, and the reason has already been slightly touched upon by a few of the other speakers here. If we indefinitely postpone, the state law will come into effect in February, I think it's February 6th, with no review whatsoever. And the reason why that's important is, I remember when I was sitting on the ZBA and doing site plan review, and one of the most important aspects of it, to me at least, was the stormwater management issue, because our town has a lot of stormwater management problems. If you live in the neighborhoods, particularly between, say, Highland and Washington Street, you've seen your yards fill up with an inch of water just at the barest rainfall. Site plan review helps address that, and with the new ADU bylaw, because ADUs, particularly detached or semi-attached ADUs, are going to increase the impervious surface across our town, it's going to impact the stormwater management. I am in favor of ADUs. I want to see as many built as possible, but I also want to see them built in a way that cares for the ecology and environmental health of our town. I don't want to see neighbors having their basements and yards flooded because stormwater management was not considered. That's a risk we're going to run if we indefinitely postpone. My proposal is that we move forward and said now, adopt the bylaw as it's been proposed tonight by the planning board, and impress upon them to come back in the spring with a revised site plan review specific to ADUs that is more streamlined and addresses all the concerns here. That allows us to maintain this control during that window where we won't have it otherwise, to protect our ecology, protect things like the stormwater management issue. And for those few short months between February and Spring Town Meeting, yes, it will be a little bit harder to get ADUs done, but we can then fix that problem in the spring. If we indefinitely postpone now or don't allow site plan review now, we lose all of that, and we don't know how many ADU applications will be filed, we don't know how much of an impact they could have on things like stormwater management, and that's a risk I'd rather take time to manage properly. And so that's why I'm against indefinitely postponing at this time, adopting what we've been given at this time, and then hopefully improving it come spring. The planning board did a great job working with the limited time they had here. Doesn't mean we can't improve it, but I would rather move slowly and cautiously because this is going to have repercussions on our town for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Town Meeting is ready. You want to speak on indefinitely postpone?
Yes. Precinct 5, Eeching Scott. I want to recommend indefinite postponement, mostly because I had the honor of serving on the planning board during -- when we were working on the ADU bylaw two years ago, and we had a great ADU working group with Disability Access Commission, people from the JNCs, and Affordable Housing Trust, a number of folks, the Select Board, to take a full year to understand what our town needed. And we had so many public meetings, we worked with folks who were very stressed by the housing issues, particularly for people with disabilities or caring for people with disabilities, because it was adamant that they needed something very official. There are lots of informal ADUs around. I've been a real estate agent for five years in town, and I've seen plenty of folks, you know, making do. There's a huge demand for a need to house your, you know, adult child or your aging parent. Those come into play, but for somebody who is trying to access certain funding from the state or the federal government in order to access these funds to help, you know, keep the person with disability within a community of resources, it was very, very adamant that they have an official ADU permit. And so for that reason, we worked really hard to make it so that there were fewer barriers to be between that and somebody with that much need. And for this site plan review to go into play, it completely receives that, and it really takes away some of the rights that people with disabilities and people who are senior had gained in the past two years. And with those gains, we got two permits. I mean, it's very, very difficult to build. So I, you know, it takes a long time to understand what our town needs, and I feel like if we do -- if we implement this site plan review, it will, you know, it will really, receive some rights that are very necessary in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of the arguments have been arguments for the main motion, not just for indefinite postponement. It's for -- I've been waiting to speak, but I've been -- it's only on the indefinite postponement, but I feel like half the arguments have been about the main motion.
Yeah, I'm calling the vote.
I'm hoping you'll consider some discussion on the main motion because that's what we've been hearing.
At this time, I believe Town Meeting is ready for the vote on indefinite postponement. A simple majority is required for it to pass. A vote in the affirmative means that we will -- that the article, which is Article 8, will be indefinitely postponed. A vote in the negative means that it will not be postponed, and we will return back to the original debate of Article 8. If you want to get your clickers out? A vote in the affirmative means that we are killing the article. A vote in the negative means that we will return and continue to debate Article 8. It's been a long day. Is everyone clear? Does anyone need any support? If your vote registered incorrectly, you may see the town clerk, but at this time, I'm confident that I can call the vote. That is 52 in the affirmative, 87 in the negative. With a simple majority required for passing, the motion is failed, and we return back to debating Article 8 as amended. Is it amended? No. As Article 8, with no amendments.
Thank you. Brian Vernalia, Precinct 4. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. This is a material change in the nature of ADUs in Winchester. Owner occupancy, age, and disability requirements are gone due to the state change in the law. This is not the agreement that Town Meeting made where the ADUs would be made with care for family and those with special needs. Effectively, every single family -- every single-family home in town can now be made into a de facto two-family residence. Developer can buy single-family homes and rent out two units virtually anywhere in town, and the state gave us one lever to manage this, and that is site plan review. Site plan review is not a special permit. It can only have reasonable requirements. Site plan reviews are non-discretionary. The underlying criteria met, the site plan review board has no discretion to withhold an approval. Special permits are discretionary. Even when a project satisfies the criteria for approval, a special permit granting authority may still deny an application. This is the right plan for Winchester with the guardrails, the only guardrails that the state gave us, and we should support this and vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Chris Nixon, Precinct 1. When I first rose to come to the mic, I was going to propose either an amendment, which was to strike the site plan review requirement under Line 10, or make a motion to amend. But before I did that, if I could, I'd like through you to make a request of Town Council. I followed with interest the discussion at the Select Board table a couple of weeks ago when the planning board presented this article, and there was some extended conversation about the requirement for site plan review. One member of the board, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, essentially said he thought it would sort of throw a wet blanket on the applications for ADUs and reflected on why we passed this in the first place in 2022. I would like to ask, not an attorney, so perhaps could Town Council explain to the meeting, Section 2, can we understand what Section 2 says? What does it call for with respect to the requirements of the review for an application? And given what that may be, how is Line 10 helpful, or is it not duplicative of that review under Section 2 as written?
For everyone who would like to refer to what the Town Meeting member is referring to, it's on page 34 and 35 of your blue booklet. On page 35 specifically, Section 10 is stricken, and it reads, "All ADUs are subject to site plan review as defined by Section 9.5 of these bylaws." 9.5 is an existing section in our bylaws. And the question is to Town Council to please provide some in-depth understanding and the process for site plan review and what this actually means in layman terms, the legal jargon.
As well as the requirement of Section 2.
And the requirement for that, yep.
Good evening. Jay Tallerman, Town Council. So bear with me, it just takes a -- I'm going to parse things out a little bit here. First of all, as the planning board has already stated, site plan review is allowed, specifically in the new statute that is regulating them, the provisions of bylaws and providing some of the exemptions that have already been discussed. We have worked on a lot of ADU bylaws for towns for various town meetings, and we have seen all shapes and sizes of site plan review, some truncated seen all shapes and sizes of site plan review, some truncated and some full site plans, some towns that have chosen not to do it. The question that Mr. Nixon poses is the relationship of site plan review perhaps to Section, what is in Section 2. In Section 2, the last part of it in particular, what it states there, and there's particular relevance in Winchester, is that if you are doing an ADU through an addition on an existing non-conforming, single-family house or duplex, then you are subject still to certain regulations. In the town of Winchester, they have greatly liberalized changes to non-conforming structures that, that house could be non-conforming generally and most frequently because it's on a lot that's too small for zoning. It could be because it has insufficient frontage, or it could be because the existing house infringes on one of the setback requirements or some other dimensional requirement. If you were doing, taking aside the question of whether or not it's an ADU, if you owned a house that was on a lot that is too small, which is pretty common in Winchester, and you were doing, and I think someone mentioned this before, I think Diab mentioned this before, a 900-square-foot addition, so which would be the maximum size of an ADU, but you were doing it just for another bedroom or sunroom or whatever, additional living space. And you were not creating any new non-conformity. You were staying within setbacks, and that's a by right use. That's what Section 355 says under the zoning bylaws, which is referenced in Section 2. So what we've done is equate that same process with respect to ADUs. So you would follow the same process. If you were doing an ADU that did not violate any of the setbacks on that non-conforming lot, then it would be by right purely. If you were doing an ADU that tripped a new setback violation, then you would require a special permit. Under that special permit, you couldn't consider the ADU use, but you could consider the bulk of that structure and have the full breadth of special permit authority, including the authority to say no, not with respect to the use, but with respect to the impact of a larger structure on the neighborhood. So it essentially is equating additions to ADUs in the same way we treat other additions to single or two-family houses by, in some instances, allowing them by right, which is very generous in Winchester, and in some instances, requiring a special permit. In the instances, obviously, where it requires a special permit, a special permit is a much more rigorous process than site plan review. I would submit that it would more or less supersede the amount of regulation that you would, would or could do under site plan review, because under site plan review, even though it's a, can be a lengthy process, if it's a full boat site plan review, you can't say no ultimately. So a special permit really ramps up the amount of regulation there. So following your thread, Mr. Nixon, in that instance, site plan review would be somewhat irrelevant in that respect. However, with respect to the ADU that's allowed as a matter of right, then it would be subject to site plan review in a way that I guess another addition on that same house would not be subject to. There are some other triggers for site plan review, so it's not an absolute, but in general, it's not automatically subject to site plan review. That said, as I think we've heard, there is some elements of adding an additional house that is different than adding an addition, a new driveway, a new entrance, other elements of an ADU that might make it a little different. And in those instances, in the towns where we've done this already, we've done at least, kind of where there's been a concern over, we've done at least a perfunctory site plan review process, not often a full site plan review process, but sometimes. So some towns have seen good reason to have some site plan review at the very least. But that just gives some context as to how Section 2 might relate to the site plan process. I hope that's helpful.
It's very helpful. I appreciate it very much. And so, Madam Moderator, it occurs to me as I listen to the example Mr. McGonigal gave a few moments ago, concerns about stormwater mean a lot to us in Winchester, but I'm reflecting on the presentation that was made in 2022, and how many instances where we have existing, for instance, accessory structures, existing garages, for example, for which a conversion to an ADU is simply a change of use. So there is a driveway, there's a structure, there's no change in stormwater management. That doesn't necessarily mean every application is going to follow that rule, but there are many, many instances of this. And so it just occurred to me, having watched the Select Board meeting, that it feels like line 10 is maybe the sledgehammer when we need maybe a finer tool, and I appreciate Town Council's description that in some other towns, it's maybe not a full site plan review, whether it's site plan review light, it's something specific. I imagine the planning board might be able to articulate a more focused review process for certain types of ADU applications without something as burdensome as what we see in line 10. And so I would respectfully move to strike the amendment to line 10 that's presented in the motion book on page 35 that says, "All ADUs are subject to site plan review as defined by Section 9.5," and that would leave the current language, which does refer back to the zoning enforcement officer, and with the hope that if this should pass, if it should be seconded and passed, that the planning board would come back in the spring with perhaps a proposal to make an adjustment that could more focus on the various types of ADUs that they think might actually be proposed in Winchester. So my motion would be to strike the amendment on line 10 as proposed on page 35.
There's a motion to amend the article to revert back, not change Section 10 on page 35 of your motion book, but revert back to it as it was written when we adopted it back in 2022. So instead of it saying, what was proposed by the planning board was, "All ADUs are subject to site plan review as defined by Section 9.5 of these bylaws," it would be converted back to 10, "The zoning enforcement officer shall determine if the ADU complies with provisions four and five above with the advice of the Design Review Committee, the DRC." There is a second. May we have a recommendation from the planning board or any comments? Select Board, please take this time, too, to review it. To the motion maker, are you also intending, since our Section 10 refers to four and five, are you also intending that four and five be returned back to its original state?
Honestly, I would defer to the planning board. My objection is that comprehensive site plan review is being required.
I have a no on that?
I believe four and five can actually go through as proposed by the planning board.
I believe that the planning board is keeping four and five as is. Is that, did you need to review that?
I do.
As is, yep. To revert back to the original version. The part, so on your page 35, when you look at number 10, you see that's all stricken through. That is a language that is currently in our bylaws, and it would be, what they're proposing is you strike it and you replace it with the 10 that's not striked. What the motion is on the table is to take out the 10 that's being proposed and maintain Section 10 as it was, we voted in 2022.
Yeah, so we would keep four and five as written previously, and as far as the recommendation, again, we are missing a member, and we are legislating on the floor of Town Meeting, which is something we really didn't want to do. I'm the split vote here. We have a 2-1, and I'm the other person. So I could support that. I think that amendment suggested by Mr. Nixon would be acceptable.
Through you, Madam Moderator, to the chair, just so we're clear. So the 2-1, the majority is suggesting they're okay with striking 10 back to the original, but in addition, keeping four and five.
Keeping four and five as is.
As originally written.
As originally written or as is?
Only so it's clear what we're voting on.
As is in the motion booklet. I want to be very clear, as is in the motion booklet. Just so I can help you clarify for the planning board, if you revert back to the way it was, it is less restrictive, it is more, there is less review. If you keep it as is, there is more review. They're tired and they're hard. They have been working on this very hard all day to get this to you. If you leave four and five as it was drafted for us, it makes it more opportunity for If you go back, it's only on exterior. Would you like to hear an alternative option?
Mr. Tallerman has great ideas. I'd love to hear from him.
My suggestion, Mr. Nixon, is that if you're interested in getting rid of site plan review and kind of, I would just have this bylaw end at nine as proposed in the motion book, because reverting to Section, the prior version of Section 10, most, all of that is in the new Section 4. So you don't need old 10, if you want to get rid of site plan review, you don't need old 10, you don't need new 10. I think that that would accomplish your goal while still capturing the other stuff in four. Otherwise, if you revert back to the old 10, there's some duplicative language with four, so.
So moved. I'd like to strike line 10 completely. Madam Moderator.
We're going to strike the motion that was on the floor to amend and return it back to, as he just noted, which is striking Section 10 on page 35 of the article. Do we have a recommendation from the Select Board? Removing 10 will remove that all ADUs are subject to site plan review. No, not even going back to the old section. It's just striking it.
Ultimately, we spend a ton of time thinking about this and making changes like this on the floor of Town Meeting is something that I'm not particularly in favor of, so I think we're going to propose this, and we will trust your vote. So we don't recommend amending.
They're taking no position. I'm going to let Town Meeting make the decision. Do you want site plan review? What? They're recommending keep it as is, sorry. No amendment, the planning board is recommending not to amend and remove site plan review.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So Select Board, I think we figured this one out. We are four to one in favor of the amendment, so that's where we are.
Okay. At this time, we're debating the amendment to Article 8, I believe, and the debate is whether we strike out the site plan review.
Madam Moderator, Dorothy Symboli, Precinct 6. I am not in favor of this amendment. I would actually like to propose a different amendment.
You can't do it.
I cannot do it, but I just want people to have food for thought. So through you to Town Meeting, and maybe somebody else would like to speak to this. So if we want to be consistent with the existing zoning bylaw, which our Town Council spoke to involving pre-existing non-conforming structures, perhaps we would like to add language, not that all ADUs need to be subject to site plan review, but that new or expanded, extended, reconstructed structures should be subject to site plan review. So in terms of debating this motion, think about that maybe could be a future amended motion.
Further on, the motion to amend striking site plan review.
Hi, Madam Moderator, Peter Shymat, Precinct 5. First, I'm going to start off by saying what's quite simple. I am completely and utterly confused. And I knew parliamentary procedure before I came here. So, and I don't any longer know what is in order, so I'm just going to say what I stood up to say originally, and that is, we had this beautifully nice, simple procedure to put an ADU on a house. I have a 96 and a 92-year-old in-laws, and the thought of them possibly living through this process to get something on the house where they could live, I think is daunting. And if I understand correctly, most of the argument, this is going to, the ADU at the state level is going to go into force on February 5th, and we're going to meet again in about a month and a half or two months. And the fear is that there will be a line around the Town Hall three cycles, and that there will be so many requests for ADU in that period that the town will be Somerville by the time we meet in May. And if that were to be true, then there would be no ADAs, ADUs, since I have been on plenty of committees in this town, and I know how long it would take to actually act on all of those committees. If there was any review process at all, we'd maybe get through three or four, our entire committee process of all those five people, or however committees are left now that we've pulled old 10 out, or new 10 out, or old 8 out, or the square root of 5. I don't know which ones are coming out, I don't know which ones are in. So nothing would get done. So that would kill the ADU process right there, but I'm suspicious that that's not actually what's going to happen, and that by the time we get back here in May, we'll have four or five of them, or six or seven of them, and we'll be able to stem whatever tide of complete societal change that was going on in that process. I would suggest, however, that I'm not the only one confused, and I would like to move to, we move that, we move this to a time certain, first order of business on the fourth day of Town Meeting, at which point, everybody will have a chance to go and meet, figure out what they really want to tell us, what this really is going to mean, and then we can do a comparison and see if we still have six or seven committees who all have to meet on ADUs, or we've gone back to something that's more in the spirit of the original law. So.
No, you can't. You can't.
You can move, you can move to, yeah, you can move to a time certain. It's just a motion.
Yes, it actually is in order to postpone the discussion and table it and take it back up. That is an in-order motion. It requires a simple majority. It requires a simple majority. Unfortunately, it also is debatable. So, however.
I'd like to move the vote.
However, it is 10 minutes in max for this debate, to table it. I don't know how you really need to debate if we're going to table it and give people time to meet with the planning board and come up with clarity. So, do we need to debate?
Can we hear from the planning board on Mr. Chymas's motion?
To the planning board, would you like to table this and take this up at a, further, at another time?
We would definitely not want to do that.
At another meeting? Not like at another spring meeting?
I think we will come back with what we have printed here. I think we would like to continue. I think, I think it's confusing where we are in the motion, but I think all of the information is on the table, and I would appreciate if we not bring it up at the next meeting.
Do we want to debate whether we table this or finish the debate tonight? All right. We are going to use our clickers real quick. All those who would like to table the discussion on this article. To a time certain, which would be the first order of business next Thursday. A vote yes, we'll move this? It would be at the end, it would not be to, it would be at the end of our agenda, just in case.
So right now, we have four ten minutes.
Yes, but in case we don't, it just goes to the end of the meeting agenda. It would be, the motion would be to move it to a time certain, which is at the end of the agenda of the town meeting.
I happen to know a secret, and that is, we're going to have the fourth meeting because I.
We may have a fifth, too, but I'm just saying, I would like you.
I tried to move the personnel meeting, the personnel article earlier and couldn't, and I'll be back then, but I won't be back before then.
That's why I want to put it with your article at the end of the meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Stayed up once.
Are you going to accept the friendly amendment from your moderator?
I am.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone want to have any comments on tabling it to the last order of business of the town meeting? Yep. A yes vote will take this article up and move it, and we will continue debating it as a last item of business of town meeting. A vote no means that we will continue the debate and we will take it up this evening. Yep.
Continue to debate would be unacceptable. It's impossible to strike 10.
That would be correct. Yep. Then we would continue debating, striking Section 10.
Can I just ask a question? Why do we have to do it at the end of my call? If we're going to end up in exactly the same position, everybody's exhausted and just wants to stop.
That would be, that would be a comment for why we do not want to, why we do not want to table it. That would be a point that you would make. So for those who didn't hear her, the town meeting member made a point saying, we're going to just end up in the same position we're in right now. Let's close it out. Is that correct? Summary? Okay. Get your clickers. Let's do it. 30 seconds. A vote in affirmative means we will be moving the article to the last order of business of town meeting. A vote in the no means we will continue and close it out this evening. 65 in affirmative, 72 in the negative. The motion fails, and we return to the motion to amend. With that, we are still debating striking site plan review, number 10, on page 35 of your motion booklet. Do we have any comments on striking number 10 on your motion booklet? Yep?
I have a personal story and request. I live in a house that's about 35 feet below the house behind me. Now it is, anyway, because I have a neighbor who extended their backyard, which used to be slightly sloped, and they made it flat. So now I'm literally 35 feet below that. It would appear that if, with no site plan review, that neighbor and some others could come and build a separate house right 15 feet from their property line, and it would be a fishbowl that would look directly into my family room, kitchen, and that family room area. If I had site plan review, I could request landscaping. I could ensure that the stormwater from that separate structure didn't come down and fill up my yard, which is already a bathtub. I could ensure that they weren't going to take parking, they weren't going to put parking at that structure and have lights coming into my house. And lights itself are an intrusion. Even when somebody turns on a light inside the house, it's going to float down to my house. So I need this protection of site plan review for those months that we have, from now until the spring, when we can come back with some kind of a site plan review for ADU units. So I'm asking you, please, let us have site plan review at least for those few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator, Mariano Goldbach, Precinct 5. I have a clarification question against the, on the legal. I'm not a lawyer. I just want to understand, we have already a zoning bylaw on how much grade you can change to Ms. Sarah's concern on the neighbors changing the grade for an addition. We already have a bylaw on impervious surface that you can change on the concern on water, which is a very valid concern. We already have a zoning bylaw on curb cut, right? If you were going to add a new driveway. And all of, so, all of those, if we remove 10, if we pass this amendment, and we remove 10, but we then pass this article with motion two, would all of those things still apply to an ADU, just like they would apply to an addition? And then, is the only difference between, I mean, would there be any difference between an addition and an ADU at that point? Would they both receive the same amount of review for the existing bylaws?
I think it's very clear what he said, and everyone heard, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, and I mentioned before that there are some other triggers for site plan review, in addition to just the kind of structure that it is, and those are some of them. So there's no exemption from other processes, provided that they don't regulate the use. So we do have, as you pointed out, a site plan review process that comes in somewhat frequently when people are changing the grade by a certain percentage. That would still apply. It is a site plan process that doesn't relate to the use. It relates to the land and for the purpose generally of controlling stormwater, for example. So that, that site plan review process is not rendered void just because this is a by right use, any more so than it would be rendered void for any other by right use.
Thank you. So I have a comment, a follow-up comment on that. So then, if we pass the amendment, and if we pass the article as amended by Mr. Nixon's amendment, then we will be protected from changes, just like we would if somebody did it for an addition. The only difference is that we would not be discriminating between an addition and having an extra door for an ADU. So I'm in favor of both the amendment and then passing the article as amended, because it gives us the protection that we need, without being extra onerous on an ADU that we are not on.
Thank you. Anyone further on the question for the motion to amend? Have you spoken on this yet?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Dejarius, Precinct 8. I still remember that. So my understanding, which may be flawed, is that stormwater management is part of the building permit process, and that is where the town engineer determines whether or not the project complies with the requisite state and Winchester ordinances and laws. So through you, Madam Moderator, to the town engineer, could, could they explain whether the stormwater management component of the building permit is sufficient to ensure that the concerns raised by this body are met?
To our town engineer, we'll defer to you on this question. Can you please provide Town Meeting information about if the stormwater management requirements that are in the permitting process would be, would take care of the concerns that have been voiced here tonight about stormwater in the town?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through the town's storm regulation, rules and regulations for storm drain usage, any project that is subject to review by a board or commission, or subject to a building permit that increases the impervious area by 500 square feet or more, is subject to a stormwater management review. So.
And for the town meeting members who are unaware what that means for the stormwater review, could you just tell them, please?
So any project that is increasing the impervious area by 500 square feet or more and subject to these other provisions must provide stormwater controls to manage the rate and volume of stormwater from the increase, to mitigate the increase.
So the engineering department will review those permits?
Yes.
Thank you, and provide requirements. Any other further questions? Okay.
Mark Fablois, Precinct 1. I am probably not alone in still being a little bit confused. I think now it seems to me that we're working scenario by scenario. So we have the stormwater as a scenario. Are the other scenarios covered in the same way by this modification? Or are we going to have to ask each department that would have to review it whether or not there would be protection? My concern is, and different from Peter Chymas's comment earlier, I'm showing my age, but I do recall a time a while back when the town meeting was having trouble regulating cell towers. And we dragged our feet for quite a long time, and there was a rush. And the reason you see so many cell towers on the so-called laundry building is because we couldn't bring it to ourselves to regulate something that we knew we needed regulating. And I'm concerned that if we leave ourselves unprotected in a way that opportunists might jump in and put in filings for an ADU, that there could easily be a rush. There's a profit motive. So I would, unless there's some certainty that we can be given that the modification to strike 10 would still have us be protected for the same breadth of scenarios, I would vote against the proposal, the amendment.
Thank you. On the motion to indefinitely postpone, I mean, not, on the motion to amend. Are you, are you on that, or are you waiting to speak?
Motion to amend.
Okay. Of the people who are not interested in speaking on the IP, on the amend, can you please back away from the mic so I know, instead of, thank you, just so I can manage. Looks like we have two left. I'm going to allow those two to speak, and then we're going to take the vote.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Town Meeting, Mike Betancourt, Precinct 6. I commend the planning board for moving forward on this in short course. I support the amendment to strike Section 10. I think it makes sense. I support the overall article with that removed. I think that what we've seen with the ADUs around the state, it has started very slowly for us and in other communities. Where other communities have adopted site plan review, it is not the Winchester site plan review on steroids. It is something that is much less, and it takes into account very minor things, you know, parking, style, things like that. It's not, it's not a full review. It is very limited. I think Ann Sarah is on the right track here, that we need a lighter review applied, rather than having nothing in the future. But I think some of these fear-based comments about stormwater management, things like that, are really just red herrings. What will happen if we put the Winchester site plan review in place in Section 10, is it will absolutely kill the accessory dwelling unit legislation that we, not only what we intended to do in 2022, but what the state intends to do here. Ours is far too robust and cumbersome. I appreciate the planning board chair being candid about that. It is going to have a fatal impact on ADUs, and we will see zero. I can promise you that. So it is too much of a process for people to go through for something that is so limited. And there are a lot of other protections in place between February and April of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Final comment?
David Miller, Precinct 5, and also the Conservation Commission. I just want a second point that Mike made, which is, I think Ann is on a good, has a good point, and how do we turn Ann's point into something that's actually actionable if we choose to remove the site plan review from, from the current bylaw proposal? But I also want to add a clarification point to what the town engineer said, which is, if an ADU is 900 square feet, and it may seem like that's automatically stormwater review, but if you build a two-story ADU, then that's 450 square feet, and there is no stormwater review for that. So keep that in mind.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Town Meeting is ready.
Madam Moderator, I have a very brief comment on this.
I said two.
Sorry, I didn't make it up here in time. I could have been done by now. Just let me.
Go quick.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Moderator, I'd like to respond to Mr. Betancourt. We're not talking about individuals anymore. We're not talking about senior citizens and those with disabilities building on lots. We're talking about large corporate builders now, that could come in and start building these structures. That's it.
Thank you. So at this time, we're ready to take the vote. A simple majority is required. It is a motion to amend Article 8 by striking Section 10 on page 35 of your motion booklet, striking all ADUs are subject to site plan review as defined by Section 9.5 of these bylaws. A vote in affirmative will strike out site plan review for ADU units. A vote in the negative means that we will keep site plan review in for ADU units. A vote in affirmative will strike site plan review, meaning there will be no site plan review on ADU units. And a vote in the negative means that we will be keeping site plan review for ADU Simple majority required. Looks like a handful of them. I'll hold the vote until we hear. Did our, did our clickers fall asleep on everyone? Thank you. Please check your votes. Thank you. Simple majority required. There are 70 in the affirmative, 62 in the negative. The motion passes, and Section 10 is stricken from the article. And the article is now amended. Returning back to the main motion as amended, comments on that? If we could not talk about site plan review, that would be wonderful. Please state the comments that have not been made, and try to be refreshing.
So just a quick comment. Seamus Brady, Precinct 1. Sorry, I've been waiting a long time to comment. I love my mother, I love my in-laws, but I don't want them living in my house. So I want to be able to build an ADU when the time comes when I need to, and that's just what I want people to think about, because I've seen it happen to plenty of my friends. Unexpectedly, they suddenly find themselves in a position where they want to be able to put an ADU in place as quickly as they can, and every month that they're waiting is painful for them, and it's very painful for their families as well. So that's just my thought on this.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Yeah, Peter Chymas, Precinct 5. Through you, Madam Moderator, to the Chair of the Planning Board, could, there's this wonderful slide she gave earlier with the hand-drawn brackets, which showed just how horrifying the process was before. Can she show that slide again and tell us how horrifying the process is now?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for calling my slide horrifying.
Not the slide, not the slide.
I think that it's amended to remove site plan review, so I think I'm going to protect my slide from your judgmental eye. But it is, it's there.
Wait, are you talking about this one for site plan review? It's been, it's not, this isn't the one you're looking for?
This is over.
Right. So are we being told that nothing on this slide is going to happen? And so, since, so what is, what is going to happen?
It's by right, so if it triggers any of the, any of the, any, why don't we do these as morning meetings?
Go to the one that's side by... To the Chair of the Planning Board, can you do it side by? The one that's side by side, that says what we had, what you're proposing?
Yes. So if it's, no, is this, no. Which one?
Nope.
Nope.
Before.
Yes. Okay, gotcha.
There you go.
Okay, here we go.
That I believe is what you're looking for.
So I think you're wondering what gets triggered without, so I believe the building commissioner can ask for review from design review. I believe the parking minimums are in place as the state requires. If it's over 500 square feet, it goes into stormwater management review. What am I missing? If it's a historic structure, if the home is a historic structure, historic commission would be consulted.
It applies to all single-family zone parcels.
Yes.
And what happens if we don't pass this?
The state has allowed ADUs by right, so I think if it doesn't pass, the state law goes into effect as written by the state, which is not complete, the rules and regulations will be completed by February 2nd, which is when the state law would go into effect.
So in other words, we go into a gray zone in which we don't know what happens if we don't pass this?
Yeah, somebody should have submitted an amendment to the bylaw.
I'm sorry.
Yes, she's, yes.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Oh, and by the way, we could keep this up until it's a morning meeting.
That sounds great. I'm just going to delete my bracket slide.
Any further comments on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Megan Blackwell, Precinct 7. My question is for you. Could you please comment why this article requires a majority vote? I had maybe incorrectly thought that if it's a zoning bylaw, that the vote is two-thirds. Thank you.
It includes, it has affordable component to it, so when they do have affordable units, substantial, not minor, they can then be majority votes. That was a recent change in the last couple of years by our state legislation.
All right, we have two people in line, and then we're calling it, and we're going to vote. Got it? Go.
Brian Vernalia, Precinct 4. With the removal of site plan review, this bylaw actually has no teeth and actually does virtually nothing. So I would recommend you vote against this article as written. Since site plan has been reviewed, removed, site plan review has been removed, I'm tired of it, we should just vote no, and then we can come back into the springtime and deal with it if we want to do it then. But this is, this does nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Final comment of the evening? I mean, I'll keep talking, but...
My apologies for coming up again, Madam Moderator. I wanted to note, there is one other difference between the previous law and this revised ADU bylaw, in that ADUs on duplex lots are now required, need to go through special permit. And that is a big change. The other thing I would like to ask through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council, there is a vagary, I believe, in when the planning board presents zoning, and there's something about when it's published in a warrant that it is assumed essentially to be in effect until it is voted on by town meeting? Is that correct? Because that would narrow the window between when the state's bylaw comes into effect and when a perhaps future proposal is put forward by the planning board.
To Town Council, there is a, once the planning board submits a warrant article to the select board, does it then put it into plausible effect that you have to abide by it until it's taken out by town meeting?
No, there, I think you're conflating a couple of things there. There is some protection that runs out for permits sought after the first notice of a bylaw in terms of grandfathering of a particular use, but in this instance, the effective date of it is the, is, gets retroactive to tonight if it passes, after the AG approves it. The question of the notice of, by the planning board and what bylaw would apply in the event that someone comes in for a permit is for a different purpose.
Madam Moderator, may I clarify my question?
Yes, you may.
Let's hypothetically assume that this bylaw does not pass, and that the planning board wishes to bring a bylaw forward for spring town meeting. Is there a window, is there a narrow window between when the state's law comes into effect? I mean, is the window between February 8th or whenever the state law comes in effect and town meeting when it votes? Or is there a narrower window because the planning board has published it in the warrant?
No, the state law will come into effect in this instance on February 2nd.
Right.
And the, and the, all the by right aspects of the state law, and some of the more limiting, not so much limiting, as regulatory aspects of this would not, even if there was notice just before that, they wouldn't apply. The state law would supersede there.
And would, it would, can, only at town meeting if, if town meeting approved, for instance, site plan review at town meeting, there would be that window between February and April where someone could come in under the state law?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My mistake. Appreciate it.
Already closed it down. We're going to vote.
This is just a point of order. So if we were to, I guess this is for Town Council.
Town Council, point of order. You have a question coming to you of a point of order?
Point of order. If we were to vote as a majority no on this, would it, would the two-year preclusion from coming back to it apply, or is there some exception in this case?
Well, it's actually a point of information. Go ahead.
The two-year exclusion is only relevant if the planning board doesn't recommend what comes next. So if this gets disapproved and the same exact version came back, the same exact version that they proposed originally, not as amended, then they could still recommend that, and we would hear it. It's only when someone tries to keep sending the same thing in, and the planning board doesn't recommend it the second time around, that the two-year thing would apply. In any event, if there's a substantive change between versions, then the two-year ban doesn't apply.
Thank you.
Yep. So for those, a lot of people don't understand what just was said, but just so you know, if the planning board has an article that comes forward from a citizen, or, and it, and they do not, it does not pass, they cannot come back for two years unless the planning board accepts that to come back. That's essentially what he's saying. There's a two-year grace period if you come to the, regarding zoning, and the planning board doesn't support a resubmission of it. Well, we are going to vote.
The clarification...
On what?
Regarding the, just the difference, on the lack of teeth, because in Article 8, we have, there shall be no more than one ADU per single-family or duplex lot. Is that the same as the state? Because I, that would be a material difference to me and to the article if it's different from what the state has, as far as how I would vote.
Does the state have a limit on how many ADUs can be in a unit on a property? In the states... In the bylaw, it calls that there shall be no more than one ADU per single-family or duplex lot. Is the state, if this does not pass, then does the state have unlimited ADUs allowed on a lot or a cap?
No, well, it gets a little more complicated in that, but I would take the argument that accessory is accessory to a primary single-family structure, but regardless of that, the components of our bylaw would survive that talk about what an accessory dwelling unit is accessory to. So even if we revert back and are applying what is still consistent with the state law, those elements of our existing bylaw would survive that talk about it being accessory to the single, I don't know, I can't recall if it's a single and a two-family, but we already govern that effectively, so it's not like there'd be an unlimited cap.
A follow-up on that, I believe, so it says text to be added is indicated, so additional text is indicated by being underlined. So underlined is unless an additional ADU is allowed by special permit. So it says no more than one, which the language is already there, and we're adding, unless an additional ADU is allowed by special permit. So then it requires special permit for additional ADU.
For an additional, under the proposed amendment.
And then if we were to just allow the state law, then there would just be only one ADU and no special permit process. Right, so this is the clarification point. So now, we would be taking away the special permit process for more than one ADU, thereby allowing multiple ADUs based off of square footage at up to 900 square feet.
Because we already regulate ADUs now, as to how, what you can do and what you can't do. It's only the components of our existing ADU bylaw that are inconsistent with the state law that would apply. So if we're allowed to regulate the number of ADUs on a property, that would be consistent with state law, and our bylaw already addresses and defines ADUs.
So, and...
And doesn't allow an unlimited number.
What, how many does it allow? It's per dimension, or?
I think it allows just one under our existing bylaw.
Under the existing, there shall be no more than one accessory unit per single-family or duplex lot, is what our currently law says.
Right.
Okay, so then if we don't do anything, sorry, it's very late. If we don't do anything, and we just allow the state law to come into place, then there's just one accessory dwelling unit allowed?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, one last point of clarification. Carol Savage, Precinct 5. Just if I want to know if I heard Mr. Jarius' point right. If we vote no on this, and then leave our current ADU legislation in place, bylaw in place, the provisions for 62 disabilities stays in place until February, correct? When the state law goes into effect? So then there would be February, March, February and March, and then we have town meeting in April, when we could come back and do whatever it is we want to do with our bylaw. Until then, the bylaw we passed previously stays in effect, right?
That is correct.
So there's this two-month window. Until then, our current bylaw stays in place, unless we vote this, in which case we basically adopt the state law today.
Correct.
Just needed to clarify that.
Yep. Okay, I think we're all ready. We got our points of information done, so we know what we're exactly voting and what the ramifications of that vote is. So at this time, we are voting to take Article 8 and to either accept it and make it our new Section 3.2.2 accessory dwelling units law on our town as amended. A vote in the negative would keep what we currently have on our books for Section 3.2.2 accessory dwelling units. Everyone understand what a yes does? We're changing the bylaw for what is in your motion booklet as amended, without site plan review. A vote no does not accept the proposal of Article 8, and we keep what is currently on our laws regarding ADU units. A vote in the affirmative will accept the motion that is coming before you from the planning board for Article 8 as amended, and that amendment was to strike site plan review. A vote no, which was just clarified, a vote no will not accept the proposed bylaw coming to you from the planning board. Our old bylaw will be in effect until February 2025, and then the state's bylaw will supersede Everyone all set? Please check your votes. We were having problems with our clickers. Before you leave, please check your votes. I believe I can call it. If there is any errors, you can tell the town clerk. But the simple majority required, there are 78 in the affirmative, 53 in the negative, and the motion passes. We will be adjourning at this time, but before we do, when we come back, we will be coming back next Thursday. We'll start with Article Number 9, which is in Act Chapter 26 of the Code of Bylaws, the Specialty Energy Code. From there, we will be going through all the capital planning articles, and hopefully get all the way through all those, maybe if we're lucky, take on some citizen, the citizen petition that has left. To all of our veterans, on next Monday, I hope you have a very special day, and I really appreciate all your service to our country. May I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, and thank you for your patience. Have a wonderful evening, and thank you for your patience.